Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our August 25th School Board Workshop. We have a good agenda here. We're going to get ready to rock and roll. Board, just so that you know, we do have a couple of board members that need to get out of here about 1:00. So we do want to make sure we're just concise on our stuff and not go off on tangents about our, you know, especially with, I know with CRI coming and they're going to present their reports they didn't get to last time. So I just want to make sure that we're focused on, you know, what we're doing instead of going off on tangents. I know I can't. My students used to let me go off on tangents, so I didn't teach the rest of the class. So with that, we do have some public comments. We have one public comment that I want to get to before we get into our topics for today, and that is Dr. Agruso. Come on up.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Susan Agruso. Nice to see all of you for the second time this week. I am a resident of Manatee County, and I am here to talk about item number four. I have a couple of comments on that. First thing I want to do is thank the three board members who are listed as contact on that item for getting back to me and answering all my questions. That said, when you get there, speed up your conversation and just say no. I understand the need for the board clerk to have some assistance. There was an assistant here and worked very well and worked with the audit committee, but there are a lot of staffing needs in this school district. And I think it's best left to Dr. Wyong to continue his evaluation of what the needs are here and make a determination on how best to get the work done and to give you the service that you need so that you can do your jobs. That's the first part. More importantly, though, for me, is the concept of putting office space up on the fifth floor. And I would say to you that that is just The space down here, I know, is very tight. I've been in there. I understand you need some more elbow room. There's some very smart district construction people around here. Maybe they can figure out some way to spread it out, give you some more space, make it more comfortable. But the fact is, your presence in this building is disrupting. You may not realize the impact you can have on staff because you are the board, and you can be very intimidating to them. Dr. Wyong runs the day-to-day operation. The staff report to him, and he needs to have people comfortable, trusting him, knowing he's in charge, and he needs to build his team and to have people near him who can do their jobs and do them effectively and efficiently. Your presence on the fifth floor undermines that, makes it harder for him. And you have to displace staff because there isn't any room up there to put five board offices. So I would urge you to think first about students, about the staff, recognize you're not management, you're the board. You've hired yourself an excellent superintendent. Support him. Let him do his job. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all correct. I didn't get a new list. That's all for public comments? All right, great. Thank you very much. Moving on to item workshop number one, CRI and the internal auditor, the reports that we did not get to last workshop. So come on up. You guys are ready. Rachel, you can introduce them absolutely.
So this is staff with CRI who's going to be making the presentation, the rest of the presentation today of the reports that have been completed for the closeout of this last fiscal year. We have Mark Smith and Maureen Kitter.
Kitter. Okay. All right. Yeah. So I'm sorry I was not able to be at the last board workshop, and but...
Yeah, I think you were on vacation, right?
It was, it was great. I was on a vacation, and it was wonderful. But I'm going to let Mark step in and go ahead and present the reports. That was the original plan, so I'll be here if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Doing well. So we have three reports this morning, and I think it's a good representation of the different kind of reports that we provide to the district. So we have more of a operational risk-based type full-blown audit, a post-audit review, and then what we've done this last year for internal accounts. So you get a kind of good spectrum here of the difference reports that presented. So the first report is the internal audit purchasing. Recall last, during the presentation, kind of our approach is this is what we would apply to this kind of audit for our full-blown audit approach. So we conducted this last year, or last school year, presented to the audit committee back in March. And overall, the audit was satisfactory. It was a medium risk on the 2020 risk assessment that were conducted. And really, the main purpose of this that you see on page two in the executive summary is really looking at the bidding rules and the processes implemented by the district per policy, and then also regulatory guidance, state statutes. And we did find two moderate items and one low-risk item throughout the report. You could see in each of those areas, management's response, which was very thorough, actually followed up and is part of our follow-up process, and that will do post-audit reviews in probably September, October. Those have been addressed, so we'll go to make sure that those responses and what management has done has been implemented. One of the items that we did also include in here was construction procurement. When we did the construction audit, the previous year, the procurement or process for construction was moving from within the construction process to within procurement. So we had to pick that up in this audit, and so we were able to, we looked at that, and we had no issues with that piece of it. One of the other items we looked at in here was vendor analysis. We like to look at and see, are there any employees set up as vendors? And if they are, why are they set up that way? And that resulted in an exception. We didn't find any fraudulent activity. All the reasons why were appropriate, and management is going to put in processes in place to address those. And the other item that was a moderate item was verbal and written quotes. It's really up to the school district below the 50,000 threshold to determine what I would say their risk appetite is and their staffing and what they're able to handle, if they're going to get written quotes for certain purchases or verbal quotes. And really, written quotes are more, are probably stronger than getting a verbal quote. So part of talking with management through this observation is that they're going to analyze, maybe lower that threshold for written quotes to make it mean more and to have more oversight of that rather than saying up to 20,000, we'll just get verbal quotes when really, you know, it probably would be beneficial to kind of lower that threshold a little and look at getting written quotes because they're more solid and, you know, have a better process in place to make sure that those are consistently followed. And if there's less than, say, three, that they document why. And so spend the time on that rather than a process that might not provide as much benefit. And then the last item we had on there was the procedure manual, which was low. They have a lot of good guidance that they have internally and that they provide it to throughout the district. And it's just a couple of key documents in there that would have benefit having that distributed so that everybody kind of is aware of the process for purchasing and how things flow, as well as incorporating some of the recommendations we had in the audit. Does anyone have any questions on this?
Yeah, let's start with any question on this report first. Messenger, no? Ms. Bray?
Yeah, you said that there were on verbal-written quotes, that there were three purchases that did not have verbal or written quotes obtained and documented. And each one of them were purchases for under $20,000. I don't understand why we have purchases without written quotes. So...
It was somewhere had, decisions was made that that price or that item was available. And at times, I think we say in here, it's a judgment call by the purchasing associate to say, yeah, that price where we're getting, what we're getting is adequate, which is fine if you do that. But one of our recommendations is then have a form that you justify why that's appropriate in that case. Because there's always going to be exceptions where you need something and the time you might take to go find them, or you know, yeah, that's, for our experience, that's a good price. That's who we've bought from before. We know its quality. And instead of, you know, getting it just to get it, that's fine. Just document why you made that decision. That was one of our recommendations was in there. If you do that, let's have it documented why you chose to do that.
After the purchase, then get something documented?
Yeah, or before the purchase is made, you decide, yep, we're going with this vendor here because we've purchased from them before. We know that they could get it to us tomorrow. So we're going to go, so document that with your purchase, your requisition that you put in while it's reviewed. And plus, in each one of these, there's always, there's a good chain, flow of approval. So it's just not one person making the decision. There's two people in the purchasing department that approve in the workflow when a requisition is made, turning into purchase order. So you do, it's just not one person making that decision. At least you have two sets of eyes within that department approving that requisition.
Okay.
Yeah. Could you describe what, if any, processes that you use to evaluate the cybersecurity risk of the chosen vendors? Was that outside the scope of this?
We didn't, it wasn't in this, but when we did the benefits audit before this, that covered doing the SOC piece of it. And in that, they're going to incorporate those pieces, and we'll follow up when we look at that.
But didn't that cover just benefit vendors?
No, they've expanded that to make a decision that if it's a new vendor and there's certain, like, three questions if they're doing any of these, then they have to now have this certain documentation. So they've expanded it, from my understanding, past just the benefits vendors.
So, but you didn't evaluate that on...
No, not on this, because we knew at that time that was a thing being implemented from after our benefits audit. So now that's, now that's going to be a practice in there.
Yeah. Would it be appropriate to put, do that up when you do the PAR on benefits?
Yeah.
That you make certain that any vendor?
Yeah.
That has access to any data?
Yeah.
You know, whether there are benefits or curriculum or what?
Yep.
Whatever. Okay.
Yeah. I'd envision taking a list of new vendors and then making sure that evaluation that they do, you know, is kind of, if they answer yes to any of these three questions, now we need to obtain this additional documentation if they're given information or have access to our system. That will incorporate that in that PAR.
Do you consider SOC 1 to be acceptable? Or there's a second level, right?
Well, there's, there's a type 1 and a type 2, but there's a SOC 1, 2, and 3.
Oh.
So there's different, there's different...
Don't ask me.
So one's more like...
You know what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
We don't want the basic, if they have our data.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it depends on what service they're, they're providing. So...
Thank you.
Only question I had, just, just for kind of everybody's knowledge too, like, when you say moderate, low, moderate, obviously we didn't have any high and critical, which is good. So let's say the moderate, the couple of things we have for the moderate. We obviously had the response back from administration, et cetera, saying, hey, here's what we're going to do to correct it, whatever. And so, you know, as I read it, obviously, this must be completed within 90 days of the audit report date, right? So when you go back and check, hey, was this done? You, you know, they give us, they give you a response. Now you're going back 90 days, make sure they're actually doing it.
Yeah.
If at that point they're not, does it get moved to high? So how does it move? Or if it is done, does it get moved to low? Like, how does that work going up and down?
I think it's more given priority of where they should address the items. And then sometimes it does take more than the amount of time. Because when we issue the report, we look for initial response of basically agreeing with it and some, at this point in time, what they feel they would implement. And then they go into actually researching and doing that. So we've had times where afterwards is expanded the time of it. We don't go back. And actually, we have some additional verbiage on what we consider these in our engagement letter, a little more in depth. I'd say it's more a priority how to, how to, what to implement, and has it rise to the occasion where it needs an immediate fix that it's broken.
Got you.
So I feel the dates that were put in here were adequate. And like I said, if we follow up and they say, well, now we further researched it, and it's going to take another further amount of time. When we go to the audit committee, we have an exception tracker and a summary that we provide on the tracker where currently that item's at, if it's still open. So that we kind of talk, we get in the pars about some of the things that we look at, too.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Tatum?
I don't have any.
Nothing? Great. Thank you for that one.
Okay. So the next one is the post-audit review of the personnel, personnel audit. So we have an audit, just like we have the procurement. What we'll do is we'll look for a time to go back with management and see, are the items that were actions put in place, have they been fully implemented and had enough time where we could come in and take a look at it if we needed to do any additional testing or transactional testing? Because management, it might be a recommendation to update a policy. Okay, they updated a policy. But if it was where there might have been a number of exceptions and they updated a whole procedure, not only do you want to make sure the procedure is adequate, but is it effective and is it actually correcting what the issue was previously? So on this personnel, one, we were able to close a number of items. However, some were still open. And I talked with Rick Bailey last week about the status of some of these and the timing of us to go back in and retest or make sure that some of these have been closed. So I think we're thinking about late September, October to come in and look at some of these items. Think there is one, two, there's three that were still, had something open in them. And, you know, part of the balance of doing the pars is we want to make sure enough's been implemented, that when we, we spent our time coming back in, we're not coming in and then having to come back a month later, that enough's, but some maybe, might be good going forward to maybe periodically do some testing so that we don't wait too much time to go in if something's been completed. But this PAR, we, we presented December, so that was at the January Audit Committee meeting. And we hope to go through and hopefully close some of these items in the next month or so from here. So like I said, Rick Bailey and I, we met and talked about the status of these, and then what we're going to do to address them and test them in the next month or so. And then we'll go back to the Audit Committee. And we probably won't, we don't present another report like this. We'll just have the exception tracker that goes into that and say, what did we tested or that we closed this item and have a conversation more than producing another draft report or another report that says it's been closed. So...
Anybody have a question on this one? Yes?
What do you do to evaluate and communicate the adequacy of the action plan? You know, you, you issue a report, there's, management comes back and says, this is what we're going to do. How do, what if that's not good enough? It's not going to solve the problem. Who evaluates that? And how do you communicate that?
When we look at, there's been a couple of times where I said, well, here's the recommendation, here's the issue, and this only partially addresses it. So I've talked with management about having to have additional information or things that they need to do to correct the item. I know in the Audit Committee, it's come up before where we might have looked at something, or they asked, well, did that fully implement it? Or maybe if we're working, they get a report. And I think, recall, there was one that we did that they had to go back and evaluate. I think it was in finance, some kind of entry that they made. And we had to kind of research that and go back because the action plan didn't have that. It had maybe going forward what was going to be done, but not addressing or the research. So then we were able to work with management, and then they addressed that at the Audit Committee. So I think it's kind of, I look at it from a standpoint of, does, would this, does it fully correct it? Or if, or if they didn't put it in place, did it address the item, you know, effectively? So they might say, well, we put a policy in place. Well, does that policy actually address that? Or is it just, you add it language, and then are you actually executing it? Are you, do you communicate it out? Because then when we go do the testing, we'll be able to tell, was it fully appropriate, their process that they put in place? So it's kind of our judgment.
Okay.
A little bit. And then, you know, we take Audit Committee's opinion, too.
Does the Audit Committee ever come back to you and say, man, I don't think this... They do. Oh.
Yeah.
They do. Okay.
Yeah.
That's good. Thank you, Audit Committee.
So...
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody else question on this report?
Last one is the, we did the internal accounts. So last year, we ended up doing, I believe, five of them. And what provided is the program that we, we performed for that, that kind of lays out the different steps and different items that we look at at each school. So we'll complete that with our work papers, but we wanted to provide it to show the scope. And it was discussed with the Audit Committee that the presentment of what you see, the exceptions behind it, was what we would do for internal accounts. We wouldn't do a full report, but that was acceptable with what observation was made, and then what recommendation, as well as management's response with that.
Mark, would you go over with them how we selected?
Okay.
The schools that we looked at?
Yeah. So last year, we performed these, the five schools, in November and December. And they were based on bookkeeper or principal changes. And we talked with the finance department at that time, which of those would warrant or feel with their interactions? Because they do work a lot with the schools. They're there to support them. They'll go out there if they need them. They'll do training. And so they identified some schools that would probably, based on their interactions, or maybe the size of the, the school or the internal accounts would be go, be good to visit. So that's how we selected those last year and performed those, those internal accounts reviews.
I remember you explaining that last time.
Yeah. So, and then, well, for this upcoming year at Audit Committee in September, and we talked with finance this week, we'll kind of go over our thoughts on when we would go back out there. And then also, we didn't get a chance to last year, but the thought is, say, in February, there's a bookkeeper change. Then, you know, if the Audit Committee, they're, they want us out there, or we suggest that, you know, that would enable us to go out there within the change to see at that point down. Because Cherry Becker, they're looking at right now all of last year. So if we went out there in February of 2024, we could identify maybe if there was an issue or if there were some, some items there instead of waiting till the, the next year that they get reviewed. And it might be a random sample during that year. So at least we look at that time period, usually two to three months right before that change. Or when we're there, we like looking at our samples and pulling documentation and doing our audit. So...
Any questions about this, the internal one?
I just have one.
Yeah.
You say you do that internal audit based on maybe a turnover on a bookkeeper or whatever that might stem. What about if the, if it's the same bookkeeper for continuous years? Would that not stem an internal audit at all?
The Audit Committee is focused more on the bookkeeper and principal changes at schools. Plus, like I said, the finance department works very closely with them. And I think they, they receive information from them monthly. You have Cherry Becker in there as well. So there hasn't been any they identified, or, you know, that's possible something if they wanted us to be involved. I feel they're, they're proactive, and they, they get involved if they feel there's an issue or they identify something, you know, while, during their course of work. So... You know, while during their course of work. So.
So it's not totally just stemmed by a change of principal or a bookkeeper? There could be other circumstances that would warrant an internal audit at that school?
If, 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 if it, if it got brought up or if they, if they asked us to, if they said, oh, we, this school, we'd like you to go take a look at. You know, we could.
Maybe finance discovered something wrong.
Cherry Becker does a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Okay. They just do a different type of audit, but every single school gets looked at.
Yeah. And they cover, we cover a little, like we looked at their pro, or what they look at, their attributes. And we test some, a few of them in ours, but we kind of go beyond that when we're on site and we're walking through. Show us where you take the cash, where do you put it? You know, where's, we count the cash there. We look at who has combination, who has keys, who has system access. And we kind of look at additional items when we're, we're on.
And if like finance, if like finance was like, they, they discovered an issue at a bookkeep, with a bookkeeper. And maybe that we never even audited and looked at them, you know, you all, they could absolutely come back and say, hey.
That actually happened two years ago. We weren't doing the internal accounts then. You had your own internal audit staff doing them. And there was an issue that came up at one of the schools. And they, you actually had your own internal auditor staff along with Mark. They went out and looked at that together. So to answer your question, yes. If, if there's a concern that comes up, that gets raised to the Audit Committee or to us, then that would be something that we would go look at. And we probably wouldn't wait.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be something that we would go do right away.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Anything? Anybody else? Great. Thank you very much. Sorry, we had to get you back here from, from last time. We, we hopefully we got to finish that last time, but thank you for, for coming back and doing that. We've got, I know we've got out rest of the year and into next year and already on workshops for quarterly. I think we'll see you again, not next one, but the one after, once the, the Audit Committee meets. And comes up with stuff for the RFQ or that sort of thing. So thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. We're going to miss you.
Yeah, it's been pretty frequent. Let's go ahead and we, we got some time before, cause I think Andrew's on his way down. He's not going to be here till 10:00. So let's go ahead and skip and wait on the legislative update and the discussion on that. Let's go to, let's go to. Well, let me, let's do this. Let's go ahead and start the, our discussion of our priorities before, I mean, he won't need to necessarily be here for all that. We can talk about our priorities, the ones that we've already talked about. Also Ms. Forman, you can give us an update on what the greater consortium said. So why don't we start with the greater consortium? Give us a little update on what some of their major priorities were and.
You all received a copy of the priority issues for greater consortium, I think yesterday in the email. Let me find it.
Yep.
Yeah, you got me on that stop here.
Sorry.
That's all right. Three pages.
This is the one they gave us.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-four legislative program.
Yeah, one of the, yeah. Okay. I've got several that look like that. But in the discussion, the one thing that I had hoped to see and that.
Twenty twenty-four.
That we had talked about was moving academics and accountability to the front page in place of funding, bumping funding down because.
Oh, for them, for, for them.
For consortium, yeah. And I, I regret seeing that they did not do that. You know, because frankly, we go consortium, FASB, Manatee County School Board. We all go and ask for money. And I'm sure that they just kind of gloss right over it. And I think we have some really significant things in asking more for academics. I don't think I'm working off of the, the copy that.
Just as you're looking at that.
Yeah, thank you.
Use mine.
Just to make sure the board knows too.
I can pull it up here.
I think Ms. Forman brought this up the other day when she was talking to us about this too. So the greater consortium, well, obviously they came together, they, they talked about the priorities. It comes back to us with what we're looking at today. And then we've got to, as a board, we've got to approve it to go back for it to be approved. If we sit here and say, we don't like this one, then it gets taken out. Am I correct on that, Ms. Forman?
That's correct.
So we, so that's something that I'd like for us to look at and say, hey, do we like these that they have? One, do we approve what they're doing? Two, do any of these line up with what we have? So we don't have to copy our lot, you know, they don't want to copy it. And so that's, that's what I would think we get out of, and we don't, when do we have to give that back to them?
I don't know soon, but we just need to, to look at it today and then put it on our, on the, the next agenda.
Oh yeah, to vote on it.
You know, get it, get it off of our plate.
Agreed.
So, okay.
Was there anything that you thought?
A couple, well, there's, there's a few things. One is they took off, in years past, they have had on there that we wanted the Milage referendum period of time to be, they said up to 10 years. And, and actually I've, I've got it on ours to discuss. And this came about with a discussion with Mr. Chapman and said, well, why not? If the, if the community is totally on board and, and we pass it at a rate of 60% or more, which by the way, ours passed at 69%. That, that indicates, you know, a buy-in from the community. And rather than have to go back every four years and go through that effort and that money and the aggravation, let's make it eight years, you know, let us skip, skip one. And I thought that was a great compromise. Them, not so much. They wanted to totally, they totally removed the, the 10 years. And said that there's no appetite among the legislators, it's not going to happen. And so they just took it off. Didn't like our idea, but it did get kicked around. So it'll be on, yeah, I, I, I want it to be on ours when we get there. The other things that are unique this year, because they did make some changes. But there was a lot of discussion about the capital. And. There's a provision in there that if, if a district has a surplus piece of property, that charter schools have the right to get it first. And there are districts out there that have purchased, that may, you know, may have invested 20 years ago in, in a piece of property with, with a great foresight. And now they've got a valuable piece of property. And they want the, they, they want the district to be able to determine who it gets sold to, what they're going to do with it, how much they're going to charge for it. You know, in other words, put it back in the district's control. And so there is a provision in there for that, that it may be worded a little vaguely, but that's, that's what they, that's what they, their concern was. Also, they made the, the point that in capital with the new provision, we need to leverage funding from the state. If a county doesn't have a lot of charter schools, they get to keep their capital dollars. You know, they don't have to share, you know, they're sharing less of their 1.5. And. So, but if you have a lot of charter schools, a lot of students, it's not number of charter schools, it's the number of students in charter schools. You get, you have to share more dollars. And so there's a, there's an item in there to, where actually they asked to go back to the 2.0 Milage levy in order to bring, to, in order to bring us whole.
Yeah.
You know, so.
So is that, that is in here somewhere?
It is.
I'm looking at the operations, probably under funding, I bet.
Oh yeah, yeah.
On page two.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I was going to ask, yep, there it is, restore the discretionary 2.0 levy. Because we, I know when we went to the finance meeting, they, you know, it was brought down from 1.2 to 1.5, many years ago, whatever. But okay, I was wondering if they did that.
And it was related to the recession.
Sure, yeah.
And, and it's never come back. And yeah, so for them to chip away at it is going to, not quite as dire right now, but it will be in a few years. And there will be a lot of maintenance, a lot of projects that districts are not going to be able to do. And. Okay. The reason about the Milage referendum, their point was Tallahassee doesn't want to obligate future boards for actions of a current board. I think they apply that, that concept to diff, to different, and in different ways to, to, to requests, legislative requests. Another one, another discussion was about cybersecurity and, and technology. They're saying, and I was not aware of this, but apparently we use, or the state uses very outdated technology. And that districts actually submit data using FTP, which is the less, least secure method of transmitting data. And so they're asking that funds be, first, they're asking that DOE, get that, we're going and asking for DOE to get more money, but, but also for, for districts to beef up cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is becoming a real problem for districts. We are blessed, we have. Yeah. So anyway. Let me see, transportation and the, the stuff about getting to 2026. If we wait until 2026 and tell parents, okay, your kids don't go to school until 8:30, it's going to be a problem. So they're, they're saying that we need to start talking about it now because they possibly with enough pushback. That they'll revisit it. They're saying next year is not the year, this is not the year to ask for any glitches or any reversals of what they've done. I think as Andrew said at our last meeting, and I think I pointed out that the consortium verified that, that this isn't the year, but we need to start talking about it and get people geared up to bring that forward, not this session, but the session afterward. The, they also pointed out that because districts are going to need new buses, more buses, and that buses come from the 1.5 mil, which is now reduced. So not only we possibly have trouble getting a, a drivers, but also getting, getting the buses. The other discussion, and actually there's going to be a group, a little spinoff group of people discussing whether and how to use affordable, use district property for affordable housing. They're going to put together a little, a little group. Some districts.
Again, I'm sorry, district property?
Yeah, using, using school district property for affordable housing, for, or workforce housing for, I shouldn't say affordable, workforce housing for our employees. Yeah. And there are districts that are either exploring it or have done it, or, or in the process of doing it. And they're pulling together a group of district people and members and attorneys to, to investigate how that could be done, if there, there may be legislative needs coming up in order to, to be able to do that, especially with how they are very tight-fisted with what we can do with our property. So, so I thought that was interesting and that will be coming up, but, but nothing for now. Then, a lot of these were straight out of last year. And we can all, you know, hopefully we've all read them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, there's nothing in here that, that I objected to during the meeting that. But.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And, and maybe you were just saying like it was discussed, but not put in here. The thing about the start times, is that in here? Cause I don't see it, but I could be missing it.
No, and they're, they're not going to put it in here.
They're talking about next year.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
There, there was another page of matters of concern. And I don't know that they, they did not attach it to the priority list. But matters of concern contained the referendum, eight years versus, you know, four years versus whatever. And then the other was the, because they don't want this to fall through the cracks, the, the change in time, start times.
Okay, yeah. I, I feel like that I'm always a believer in less is more. Like I think if you hand this to legislators and it's.
Oh, I know.
Here's your entire booklet on our concerns. I, I mean, like I feel like a one pager or a one front and back is all that.
I'm with you.
I mean, like, if, and the other thing is, like, I feel like if you put too many things, you give them wiggle room. Right? Like if you pick your top 10 and they don't do any of them, that speaks. If you give them 20 and they pick number 18 and go, well, I did number 18. Because you gave so many things, you know? I, I mean, obvious, I, I'm not disagreeing with anything that's on here. I was just curious about the start times and the length of it, which is, it is always long.
Yeah.
It is.
Actually, there were, there were.
It's a little too long.
That commented on that. First of all, it's, it's going out to all the districts, so some, you know, so it can get shorter.
It never, it rarely does. I think last year, one district pulled one thing. It, that doesn't normally happen.
They did, I mean, they've got, you know, like Miami Dade, Palm Beach, they have their own in-house governmental, basically their lobbyists. And they are, they are working on this. And they advocate for the things on here, you know, not, you know, and obviously their, their first priority is to their district. But, but they are, they are integral to the creation of this. And they did go through a list of the successes from the consortium list last year to, to what happened. Obviously there were more misses than hits, but, but that, that information, I think we all got, we're all on the list, on the mail out list from the consortium. And it, and it was one of the attachments. So there, there is success, but.
Well, I'm not saying there's not. I just think when it's this much, how much are, how, I worry that you're making less of an impact because it's a lot. I don't think, you, you know what I mean? I don't know what you can do about it.
We're not advocating on this one.
No, I know.
But I think they're going to, they're, they're.
They're advocating, they, they know what they're doing.
I bet you they probably pick certain ones with certain reps.
That's also probably true. Yes, I do.
And we can pick from it and put it on our own. And I think our own needs to be succinct and.
I agree with that.
Precise and specific. And so from this, we can draw some, some good help with wording.
I agree with you.
And, and our priorities, you know, I mean prioritize what, what we want. One of my big, big beefs with our legislative ass is that these are a lot of policy items or a lot of things that affect all districts. And when we put together our priorities, if it affects our district only, like Guy Harvey, you know, the airport, they want to give us a win. You know, they want to give us something, you know?
It's our own delegation, yeah.
Yeah, our own delegation. And so if we, and in the past, we've only had one item that was really ours. And that's where I would love to see us today be able to come to something that one of our ass and just make it, make it ours.
Can I ask?
Give them a couple of things to, we're overdue for some big wins or some more wins, I should say, so.
Can I ask you the intention of one of them?
Sure.
As I read it, I just want to know the intention of it. It's on page two and it's still under funding, but it's the second from the bottom. Provide adequate funding to significantly increase mid-career teacher and support staff salaries on a reoccurring basis and minimize the negative impacts on the current employee retention crisis, including dealing with compression resulting from recent legislative increases to minimum salary levels. One of the things that I have on ours and it's, I've come up with different wording, but it was more along the lines of the differentiation we have to do between. the differentiation we have to do between grandfathered and performance. But I don't know if this is really saying that, or it's just saying, since we had to move up and compress the salary schedule. I don't see something like what I was hoping to add to ours. And so I was kind of curious if that was discussed, if that is aimed here, or I'm just missing it.
It wasn't discussed. That was a carryover from, from the prior year.
Okay.
No.
This, I read it as like those year twelve to fifteen teachers. That now all of a sudden your new teachers are caught up, and they didn't get any bump, you know, with the legislative, some of that, that's what I, how I read that, which I do believe is a problem.
I do too, yeah, I agree too.
And, and to me, that's, that, I, I don't know what the underlined ones mean, is that new ones?
Yes.
Okay, so the underlines were new. I mean, that to me is almost like priority one, I mean, that, that, that one's up there in my personal opinion. I know it's down here at the bottom of this funding part. But anyways.
Well, and that's where our list of priorities comes into play, but just so you know, they're, they're going to operate the same way they did last year. They're going to have, they're going to have a dinner and business meeting the night, come January. I think it's during the second week of the se- of session. And they'll have a dinner, the consortium will, a bit, you know, where we're, a business dinner. And then the, the next day, they will have that conference room for the full day, which I thought was excellent way to do it.
If we can get the legislators to come in, there was only, how many came in there last year?
Well, we were only there for an hour or two.
Oh, okay.
And you were busy politicking down in the.
I was.
Yeah, yeah.
Advocating for our district.
It wasn't politicking, it was advocating, speaking, speaking at the.
Incentives in the conference room.
Yeah, yeah, but anyway, so I, I plan to, to go, the consortium is going to, because they're doing it differently. FASB is not putting together the rooms because it's so expensive. So they said we need to go get our own, and the consortium is going to try and reserve a block of rooms and, and let us know. So that'll be coming up pretty soon.
Right.
We need to get a reservation if, you know, so anyway.
So will you get that?
We'll all get that, I guess, and invite, and then.
Everybody's invited.
Set up the legislative day yet? I don't think they have.
That, that's what she's.
Well, that's what they're, they're changing the way they're, they're operating. They're not going to do a.
They're not going to do that.
Oh, I thought you said just the consortium said that. Oh, FSBA is not doing that.
FSBA is not doing that, so the consortium is getting a block of rooms.
Gotcha.
So we'll go through them instead.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But yeah.
So, so I guess, so I guess.
Jump on that.
Yeah, we'll get that in January.
People will.
I guess what I want to hear from everybody is, do we feel like what, what we've seen from the greater consortium? Do we agree with, with some of these issues, what they have? Do you want to take away and go, Mr. Tatum, we'll start with you on this side, since you always get the last bit usually.
On the last page, under operations, a lot of school districts, the option to participate in the state health plan. Apparently that's prohibited by law, right? And I don't know, is it prohibited by law? I mean.
I think each county must have their own, because I think we've even had conversations about putting multiple counties together, and I think we were told at the time we weren't even allowed to do that.
But, so are they, are they asking for like the state?
Well, the, the state has a health plan, and we are not eligible to participate, but we want the ability to.
If we want.
If we want to, so.
That's actually a good point that you brought up, because the more participants you have in a health plan, the better rate you get, and actually even services. So I like that. I have actually even, even with the county, you know, they're, I don't know, do they do their own too? And it's kind of like we're all doing our own little thing, when we could do that in unison and come out better, I think.
Not to mention, it's an administrative burden on our, each county staff too.
Right, right, we have our own, yeah, everyone has their own staff doing it.
Our own priorities, so we emphasize.
I like that, actually, when I saw that, I'm like, yeah, I've been barking about that for a while now, so.
Does anybody have a, a history back far enough to understand why it's prohibited? I mean, usually.
Yeah, any of them.
Dr. Wyssong, you've been around long enough to, to know, what are your thoughts?
Mr. Rinaldi, do you know? No one knows, okay.
Going after all the old guys, huh?
Sorry, it's, it's history. It's history.
Does anybody have a, for you gentlemen who have been in the system for decades, do you have any thoughts on that? Is it a good idea? It's not a good idea? We think it's a great idea, but history shows that, you know, or?
I'm not picking on you, Mr. Rinaldi.
Well, I mean, from, from the standpoint of history, it, it was a significant hit to go from the two point oh to the one point five in regards to the millage. And with, I mean, because so much of that money is used for maintenance, repair and upkeep. And when you look at even the literature on how we should be maintaining our facilities, we should be spending about five percent of the actual cost of our facilities, the, the present market value on maintenance. I think we ran the numbers with our last budget, and we were probably around two point five, between two point five and three percent. And that's how you get into the issues of deferred maintenance and kicking the can down the road. Chiller is going bad and air handler is not working and those sort of things. So you're just, you're starving the facilities, and that's what happened when, and that was the prediction when they went from two point oh to one point five. And it wasn't going to happen overnight. It was, you know, ten years out, which I believe was around two thousand seven, two thousand eight is when they made that move. And then, then it, so it, we knew it was going to be ten years when you're, you're all of a sudden going to see your physical plant declining significantly. So I, I'd like, I always like to see the two point oh in there from, from a standpoint, because it, it keeps it at least, you know, hopefully in front of them. I, I don't know if they're going to really take any action in regards to that, but I mean, that's, I'm, I'm always happy to see that there.
What about, what about the health insurance?
How about the health?
Oh, oh, oh.
That was, I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I thought we were talking facilities like that.
That's actually a good education too.
So is it, the question at hand is, it, it might seem like a good idea to participate in a statewide healthcare system. As Ms. Bray said, normally you get more people in an insurance program, it reduces costs for everybody. But maybe there's a reason it's not a good idea, it's been tried before and it didn't work out, it, it cost the employees more, I was, I don't know.
I mean, some, some of the benefit of being self-insured is that, that we have control. And that we're monitoring what our expenditures are. If you go into a larger system, and even if you team with another county, you begin to lose that control. And if you go to the blue crosses and blue shields, then they're dictating to you what your percentage of increase is going to, to be. You, you begin to lose that control, I mean, and, and it does take a lot of staff time through the HIC committee and all that to monitor what's going on. So, but, you know, there may be some, you know, reduction in, in what the costs are by going to the state system. But I, I, I think you, you may lose some of the benefits of having unique items within your specific plan that are tailored to your employees when you go with the state system. It just, you know, standardizes it across the board.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, you look at our retirement plan, you know, we participate in the state retirement plan, and they stick it to us continually. Whereas if we could control our own retirement plan and our own retirement benefits, uh, could be, that would be a big cost savings, I would imagine. You know, to get away from the defined benefit and go to the, you know, but that's, that's, that's my two cents on that. One thing that they did say in the consortium on the capital was they recommend that districts redo our five-year capital plan based on this reduction coming up over the five years, so that we have the talking points when we go to meet with our legislators and say, this is what we cannot do.
We're losing this amount, yeah.
We, we were going to do this, but we're out of luck, and.
In, in addition to that, also looking at the funds that the charter schools are now receiving on a square footage basis compared to what our funds are on a square footage basis, and look at it from a standpoint of a, of a cost per student as well.
Right.
So that's the other things that when we ran the numbers, we, we looked at that as well.
If we get a report on that, that'd be great to have.
I mean, nothing will happen this year, but we do need to start harping on that because it's.
Did you have a question for?
No, just back to the health insurance. I, I am. When I talk to people that are on the state health insurance plan and have compared our plan, there's a huge difference in coverage and basis and cost. So I don't know, have, have we done a comparison of what our health insurance, self-managed, self-funded versus the state health plan managed and funded at all? Have we done a study about that?
It's never been an alternative.
It's never been an alternative.
Because we've never had a chance.
Right, I, but I know there's not an, it's never been an option. However, have we ever looked at what the state plan is versus the self-funded with the county? I mean, all sixty-seven districts do their own self-funded insurance?
No, some, some aren't, go ahead, Dr. Wyssong.
I was just going to say, no, they're not all self-funded, so some are, some are.
Fully funded.
Right.
With like a.
What about, okay, Simo, were they self-funded?
Um, yes.
They were. Out of the sixty-seven counties, how many were not? Do you have any?
I know Hillsborough is like one that does a plan.
Yeah, they have.
Is there any counties that do?
Like a tradition, like a kind of traditional where, yes, Hillsborough County.
Hillsborough is one.
All right, so Hillsborough does a traditional, but no one's really said, like they're greater Florida, thank you. I have that hardest time with it where, I don't know if that would be an option to add to priority of one year, to just to see if that could be.
Well, I think we just put it on our, on our priority list and just to get the option, you know.
Right, give, give the.
You know, to have, to have.
District's options other than.
To be able to do that if we want to, you know.
Not, not just maybe the state plan, but even the ability to work with other counties. I mean, what if this consortium got together and created a health insurance plan?
Well, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you, do you know what I'm saying? The, oh, but see then, then you come into question of like, we're self-funded, so we'd have to really go through a transition, I think, to do that. But maybe in the long run, that would be better. I, I don't, that's something, I don't, I am not, like, that's something that.
Yeah.
You'd have to get numbers on whether that's really worthwhile doing.
Sitting right here, I don't think we're ever going to.
No, but, but.
I just didn't want to let that topic go by diverting over to the other.
Yeah.
Well, we know it's in the consortium plan.
It seems like a small, how many people are on our healthcare plan? About eight thousand, something like that? Anybody, roughly? The, the point is, it's not a big pool of people, you know, if you tried to run a car insurance company or something like that with eight thousand customers, you wouldn't probably be able to do it, and it, and it's, we've proven that unfortunately, it's hard for us to predict our costs. And now, and, and they're, and we know what situation we're in right now, so. But that's due because, you know, when you have that really small group of people, and you have maybe ten people who come up with some very large healthcare costs, that. But if you had eighty thousand people contributing, or a hundred thousand, or a million, that's the whole, that's the whole point.
It's one of those things that even in the purchasing field, and I'm sure purchasing would agree. If you can get a big purchasing deal across the country on this one item, your cost for that item is going to be a lot cheaper, because you're buying in volume.
Yeah, go, Ms. Sellers, how much, you said?
So about fifty-seven hundred employees with this district are participating in the health insurance program.
Do we know how many actual people are covered then, if you threw, if you put in family members?
Is that spouse, family members?
I don't have that number at the low which ones, got children, spouses.
Yeah.
Well, that's something we need to actually look at. I think futuristic, we should do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I think that we're going to, the struggle is the control, right? I think that the, the, the districts that like the control of being self-funded, you know, and it's something that, I think that's a bigger, that's definitely a big picture.
I'm generally in favor of that. I'm generally in favor of that small, local self-control, but when it comes to something like this, I mean, I, you know, I envision like having a citywide car insurance company or something, you know.
Option to do it, maybe it doesn't work for us, but we look anyway.
At least the option.
But now we don't even have the option.
And one, one last question from Mr. Rinaldi before I maybe move on to somebody else. I wouldn't, I'd like to know, or if you could get that to us, you made an interesting comment. You said the literature shows that we should be spending five percent, and it'd be intere-, if you had a reporter, I don't want to create a lot of work for somebody, but it would be interesting to see that, that, and maybe even if you had some examples of deferred maintenance, like I know we had some issues at Lakewood Ranch High School where some of the air handlers, chillers, you know, had problems, and if you could, you know, ethically tie the, hey, we had this deferred maintenance, we probably should have done it three years ago, but here was our budget, and so we kind of deferred the maintenance, and guess what? When school started and we fired these things up, you know, and that, that would just be a good example of something we could use.
I'll put that together.
Okay, thanks.
Rook, I just want to touch base, did, have you talked to Andrew?
Any second now.
Any second, okay. So, so was there anything else? As I said that, there he is. Was there anything else from the greater consortium you felt like, hey, we're good, like you felt good about everything, including everything?
The language is, I, I mean, three pages to miss.
Well, yeah, what I want from us is to know, can we put this on the next agenda to say, we approve this so the greater consortium can roll? It, it, do I get a consensus, consensus that all of us feel like there's nothing in here we want to pull?
Well, I, the workforce housing thing, I just don't think that the, you know, education field should get into housing.
Well, that's not on here.
Oh, it's not on here.
It was on that list of things.
It was on the.
On the list. Committee that talks about it.
Oh, all right, okay.
Which might give us more information, positives and negatives, because there is, I, I know like one county that kind of did some kind of program, but I don't.
Managed, I'm sure, so.
The, the Keys has got just a huge problem with that.
Oh, I bet.
You know.
Oh, I'll bet.
Oh, yeah, yeah. In fact, they announced yesterday they're going to virtual teachers for physics and chemistry, I think.
Wow.
No, they.
You could.
Copy, by the way, I printed it again.
There was one more thing. Where, where does it say? I saw it said, ensure every, every school that gets government funding has the same financial accountability and.
Oh, that's on ours.
Where is that one?
That's the governance probably.
Front page, right in the middle.
Yeah.
That's ours, yeah.
Well, we have it on.
But they have it on their, on, they have it.
Oh, into there.
What does that ex?
I'm assuming that's with the charter, like the, now that the vouchers with HB one, I'm assuming.
I would have private, private schools in too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if you get any funding from the state, you got to follow.
Yeah, the, and the discussion centered around, and I agree totally with what, what they had to say, was that we need to be on the same playing field, but we don't, we probably should step away from saying level playing field, because they're likely to try to bring us down to their level.
To their level.
And we need to have, if you're getting government money, you know, for, for education, you need to have certified teachers, you need to be. You need to be, you, you need to be teaching to the standards, you need to be, uh, reporting, reporting on the norm reference test. So that's their point is to, you know, you've got government money going for who knows what. They could be teaching, you know, whatever.
They do.
And, and we have, and it's just, you know, that's not a, not a good use of taxpayer money, so.
That's not what the led, that's not what the legislators said in the sense of the, the purpose of, see, it's kind of an interesting, it's an interesting idea, is that is it taxpayer-funded money, or is it just people using their own tax money to put their kids in, in the schools where they want to go to? When, when you say things like you have to have certified teachers, for instance, charter schools, I don't think have to have certified teachers.
Yeah, they do.
Does a charter school have to have a certified? Okay, well, maybe, okay, maybe, okay, I'm wrong on that.
They're not private.
Private schools don't have to have certified teachers, and, 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 and why should they? I, I mean, like, I'm not a certified teacher, but I think I'm perfectly capable of, I know I'm perfectly capable of going into a high school right now and teaching French, or probably English, or even history, or something like that, and.
But there are people that don't have. But there are people that don't have.
Right.
The, the ability.
But that's.
I think, I think it comes down for your, what you're asking is, I agree with you, if they're private and they, you're, as a parent, I'm gonna pay for them to go to my, that school, and I know that, hey, they may not have a Florida teaching certificate, whatever. But it, but then now they are getting, they are getting part of the required local effort, et cetera, to have their kid go there now, so no longer is it truly private. It's now government funded.
Funded.
So, so at that point, I think what they're saying is, now you're getting state money for it, you've got to be on the same requirements that everybody else does, right?
And they need to be accountable. I mean.
I mean, they don't have.
We don't know that these, the voucher schools, we don't know how their students are performing. We don't know their graduation rates. We don't, you know, they don't even have to take the same test as our kids. So you don't have a comparable information, and so parents just don't know.
I was going to say, to me, like, the tax dollars you're talking about, that, that's the community's investment, right? Well, now, they get, they get all of that information from us. We get audited, they can see where our finances go. We're, we're pretty, we have to have everything listed on our website. We are incredibly transparent. Our meetings are in public. Our curriculum has to be approved by the state and has to follow the state's standards. Our testing has to, once again, align with the state's, well, that's debatable, align with the state's standards and be reported out. We, we, there's that return on investment, right? The community's making the investment. We are providing that return on investment. They are now receiving that community's investment, but not providing the community any of that information on the return on their investment.
Right.
I, I think they have the right to do whatever they want in that private school. I don't think anybody's going to debate that. But as soon as you start getting the community's investment, you, the community deserves that return on investment. I mean, that's at least my point of view on that. Like, it's. I, I don't, I, I don't guess I don't have a better way to say it other than that. To me, you know what I mean, it's.
That's something that you, well, let me ask you this. Is that something you, you don't agree when you want to pull from this, or is that something?
I guess in, in theory, I don't have a problem with maybe taking some state tests. Although we recently even had a conversation with someone who's knowledgeable about this, who said, we teach to the tests. And oftentimes, and we orient, we, there aren't things that we might like to have in our curriculum, but sometimes we have to teach to the test. And so our curriculum is oriented towards testing. And the point of private schools is maybe there's a better way to educate kids without, without these teaching to the test things. And if you have private schools that, they don't have to take these tests. And it's, it's part of school choice, it's part of, I don't want my kids to be in a school system that quote-unquote teaches to the tests. And I have a better way of educating my children. And, and so, I mean, it sounds like a good idea initially, like, oh, everyone should take a state test. Get state money, you should have to pass a state test. Yeah, but then, again, this person told me who's been in the system for decades, a lot of our curriculum is just teaching to the test, and there might be things we'd want in the curriculum, but we don't, because we spend a lot of our time teaching to the tests.
Well, isn't that a problem with the system? I mean, that's kind of my point, like, that's a problem with the system that the state has created. And instead of fixing that system, they're like, oh, well, if you don't like that system, well, allow us to fix the system. You know, I, I don't, I agree, like, I don't think it should be taught to the test. When I was a teacher, I never did. I was like, here's my standards, I'm gonna teach my standards, and my kids will do well because of that. But I also understand the amount of pressure our teachers have and our schools have on the system that has been created. That's a system problem. I mean, you talk about the bureaucracy, the amount of bureaucracy that exists is a problem. And the private schools became private because they didn't want to deal with that bureaucracy. Cool, I'm cool with that, that's fine. But don't, don't, then don't take the public's dollars and then do an end run around everything that has been put in place that I think is faulty.
Yeah, it's a philosophical difference. I don't.
For sure is.
When I look at it, the public's dollars, it's just an interesting view of, we, we take money from taxpayers, now it quote-unquote becomes government money, and so now we put all these bureaucratic rules around it. But anyway, I don't want to get, I don't want to go strong on the right.
Yeah, get back to.
I, I, I don't have any problems with it. The legislature, I think, will, at least the one in place now is pretty aligned with the way I might be thinking a lot of these things. And they're not going to put a lot, hopefully, a lot of restrictions on private schools, and it's not a discussion. It's just not worth having, let's put it that way. I mean, it's worth, I don't mean to be flippant about it.
Worth having, but not in this particular sense.
Yeah, so.
We're trying to get our legislative session.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so anybody else, is everybody good to say, hey, we like this, what they're doing, to be able to move this forward to the meeting? We're all good with that? Okay.
I just think they need to slim down some of the language.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately.
That would be the only thing.
These lobbyists, they gotta get paid.
Yeah, there's so, so many things that need changing.
No, I'm kidding.
Buy the album, right?
Um, okay, so we're gonna move from the consortium stuff. Thank you, Ms. Foreman. Uh, that was really good, obviously, with notes you took, and, and the, the stuff you had. Thank you. Kevin, do you want to go ahead and introduce Andrew? And then we can talk about how we want to tackle the next part, which is our own priorities.
Yeah, so, I think you all know Andrew Collel, but you see him in Tallahassee, and part of the Sunrise Consulting Group. And so Andrew's joining us today. I was whispering in his ear about your question about why school districts cannot participate in state health plan. Andrew might have an answer to that. So, Andrew, I'm gonna give you the podium, and then we, you know, two minutes on that, and then we'll.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'd love to hear about the, the health plan first. That'd be good to hear.
Welcome.
Good, good morning, Mr. Chair and everybody else. Good to see everybody here. So, yes, thank you, one, thank you for having me. Two, I think it's great that you guys are taking the time to work on this. I think a lot of school boards put together an appropriation request once a year, kind of last minute, and that's all they do, right? So I think it's very important that you guys are doing this. To the state group health insurance, I don't know if y'all saw, the Florida college system has tried to make a push to be included in the state, the division of state group health insurance. The Florida college system is not included, even though they're kind of a state entity. They were born out of school districts, but at this point, they're more of a state-controlled thing. So the way this, the division works is it's defined as to what is a state employee is, and what is, what types of entities, state entities can be on that. There are no local entities at this point that are in that. Now, the argument can be made that a school district is a political subdivision of the state, just like any county. There has not, it has not been warmly received for the, for the college system to be. Hasn't been, it hasn't been a no, it's just, there's, there's some conversation there that's hesitant to include the college system. And it would cost about three hundred and fifty million dollars to include the entire state college system. So we include the college system, well, what about the school boards? Well, what would that cost be to include the school boards? I, I couldn't even begin to tell you. And then the school boards get included, well, what about the counties, right? I don't think it's necessarily unreasonable for the legislature to consider adding the college system. But if you're gonna add the college system, add the school districts, if you're gonna add the school districts, you might as well add the counties. You might as well put, and there's states out there that have the all political subdivisions that are in things like the state, like in their state health insurance system. If you're gonna do it, it's almost like do it all. So I, I don't, I don't think it's an unreasonable thing to talk about at all because the college system is pushing it. It would require an actual statutory change in the state group health insurance to consider what is an entity that can be added in that. Currently, school districts are not in there. It is defined, state entities, you know, kind of lists what's, what's in there. It was just kind of my background. Ask me some specific questions and I can.
As you're bringing that up, that, when I think about it from a, from the legislature standpoint, right, is a three hundred and fifty million dollar cost, right?
For the colleges.
Correct. But right now, they're not in, they're not, they're not paying that because the college is paying that. So I don't see the legislature saying, oh, yes, we'll incur, that we'll, we'll take on this cost now.
So the legislature is actually funding the college system for the most part.
Right.
The way it's funded, like, the school districts, and actually, the school districts really are, for the most part, other than your required local part, are funded by the state through the F E F P. The counties are not, and the cities are not. But the college systems, almost in totality, are funded by the state legislature. But the way they're funded, they're given a lump, you guys have an extraordinarily strict setup in the dollars that you're given. The college system is given, here's your lump sum of money for the year with do whatever, you know, with statutory that you're supposed to be, that your charges and duties are. But there's no restriction on this account. It's actually one line item in the state budget. It is Florida college system program fund. And then that money goes from, and I'm sorry to give you guys all this background.
How can we get that?
And so it would be incredible to have Florida school district program fund. And so the way that the colleges, the twenty-eight colleges got together, they come up with a formula, right, of how they want their money to be distributed, that the college presidents agree on. They give that to the Department of Education that says, this is the document by which we want our money distributed. The legislature provides a lump sum, D O E gets the money, and they stick it through that formula, and it gets spread out accordingly. The only thing that's in any kind of actual text structure is that, is that formula that they come up with. But again, the school districts have this very strict statutory, the F, the F E F P. But back to what I was saying, they are almost primarily funded by the state, but they're not considered state entities for the purposes of state group health insurance. We would have to do a policy change for that. So similarly, the school districts are almost totally funded by the state, but they're still also not considered state entities. And again, I almost think the argument can be made, and I hope nobody from the legislature is watching this, because I don't want to say that I'm, because it is, it would be an incredible cost at the school districts. But the argument can be made that the school districts are a political subdivision of the state of Florida, and in some weird way, they're, the districts for, for like D O E, like, they're kind of dotted line entities to D O E, in the same way water management districts are to the Department of Environmental Protection. I don't think it's unreasonable to try to have a conversation with the college system and everybody get together. It's, it's not unreasonable to make those requests together, whether the legislature finds the amount of money reasonable or not, it obviously is a different conversation.
Why does it, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump.
No, go ahead.
Why does it cost, why will it cost the three hundred and fifty million dollars to bring them in?
To the college system? So the legislature currently gives an amount of money now to the, to the college system, it's like one point one billion dollars. They go out and purchase their own health insurance to bring them into the state. So, so let's say, let's take one, let's take one college, Hillsborough Community College. They currently, the legislature every year sets the rates for which state group health insurance. They tell the Department of Management Services, these are the rates that you will charge your eligible employers, like, there's no wiggle room. The college system now, all twenty-eight of them, some of them are, do a consortium thing, or some of them just buy their own plan. Let's say for a family, a college system, take your local community college here, and I can't remember the name of it, is paying fifteen hundred dollars a month for a family, right, out of their money. For them to go in the state group health insurance, that's now eighteen fifty a month. They need an additional three hundred and fifty dollars per month for that one family, so that's, there's a whole, you would, even on a single person, that's why they would cost the state, they would have to give more money for them to then change their insurer to the state.
The costs go up.
The cost, the costs go up generally. My only argument to the college system has been this, you guys all kind of, the state group health insurance is what the state group health insurance costs, right? So if they, theoretically, they could allow school districts to participate in state group health insurance and not provide you the money to do so accordingly. Without making it a compulsory requirement, they could just say, school districts, if you want to, you could participate, and we're not going to provide you the money accordingly. And then the state just becomes a carrier that the school district could go with. In the same way, they could go with self, self-insured plans, same way they could go with Humana, could be an, an option for them. But for them to make it a compulsory requirement to participate, you guys are gonna turn around and be like, you're now saying we have to participate in this, which may be better for the end user, the employee, but like, we need an extra, on average, two hundred and seventy-five dollars an employee per month to do this. And when the legislature adjusts the rates, they usually, for state agencies and the university system, whenever they adjust the rates up from, let's say, eighteen hundred a month for a family to eighteen fifty-five, they provide that difference to those state entities to then turn around and pay the bill back to the state. So that was something I actually said to the colleges, was like, you guys have flexibility now that if you don't like the plan that the state's offering for some reason, and the state plan is very good, but for some reason you don't like it, or you can go, you're giving up the flexibility you have. What I recommended to the colleges, and I, it did not, maybe just because it came from me, I don't know, was, ask the state, what you're trying to tackle is these rising health insurance costs, where you're getting no help, right? You're getting no help on these rising health insurance costs. Maybe if the state provided a fund to the college system, specifically earmarked for health insurance, and when costs go up on average three or four percent, the state could put some money in there to send back down to the colleges to help subsidize their private costs. And it would be less money than giving them the three hundred and fifty million dollars to include them in the state group health insurance. Okay, I've rambled.
That's good, I mean, it's good to know. I just. I, when I look at legislative priorities, we, we, for me, it's about victories and getting as many of the victories on this page that we can give to somebody. And I, this is a major mountain to climb. Even allowing us the option to get on the state health, like you say, I mean, the, the colleges are doing it. I, I just, I, for us, I did, I will, I'm okay with consortium putting it on there. I think for us, it's too big of a, of an item for us to have for, on ours.
It would have to be.
Because I agree with Ms., Ms. Messenger said, I think that ours needs to be three to four, five items, you know, ten at the most, that here's, here's the ones that we are gonna, that they're gonna affect us here at the district the most. Now, the state health plan definitely would if we had that choice, but I think that that's a, that's, that's a big mountain to climb, that the universities are already doing it, that, and so, I, I'm okay with it having on the greater consortium, I just don't know about, is it effective for us to have it?
I say let the colleges fight the fight.
Right, and then maybe we jump in later.
And then once they win it.
I, I nose in the tent on that. I'll, at the same time, if they're gonna do it, ask for it as well. I would just, yeah, I would try to go with what, um, wins you think you can accomplish.
Okay.
Great. Did you, let me ask you this. How, did you have any idea of how you wanted to proceed further with this?
I think.
With Andrew here?
I think with what.
And I'll give you my thoughts.
Well, just so the people listening, right, I've, I've met with each one of you to go, to kind of get your, your consortium of priorities on this page. So this hopefully reflects what you all, you know, on a grand scheme, would like to see. But I'll leave it up to you all to figure out how, how you'd like to expand this list, condense this list, prioritize the priorities. So that, to your point, and if that's the board's point of, you know, maybe, you know, Andrew, maybe three, three to five, something big hitters, and then, and then some sort of appropriation requests.
Here's my thought is to, have you've seen our priorities already? My thought would be, you're, you're the professional, meaning you, you know the inside knowledge, you know kind of what's happening, things like that. Obviously, you're not predicting the future, but you kind of understand, hey, this is not gonna happen, this has a chance, this is worth it, this is not. So I would like to hear from you on ours.
So I wrote.
But before that, Ms. Messenger had her hand up to.
I just had ideas, a way to consolidate some of the things, because I think some of them actually go into other things that are already on here, or could be lumped into something else that would consolidate. I just had different ideas.
Okay. So do you want Andrew to go through?
Doesn't matter how, you wanna do it, you're the chair.
Okay. I agree, I think there's gonna be some stuff consolidated, but I'd like to hear from Andrew, like, and maybe you have some ideas, like, hey, one in seven, I'm just making numbers up. One in seven can, can come together or whatever. So.
So first off, thank you all again for the time you've put into this. Kevin sent me this document a while ago. I took this document and I tried to shop as much feedback as I could with this document. I will tell you from a very high level in trying to engage leadership right now, like, actually Sean tried to talk to the speaker's office and say, because we heard about one of these items that we heard was like maybe something they were very interested in. We could not get any, you know, succinct feedback out of them at, at this time. That obviously doesn't surprise you, remember Tatum? But anyways, so I went through this. Number one, expanding universal full-day pre-K in, in public schools. That was what I had heard some scuttlebutt on, potentially there was some interest from the House in actually doing that. And it had something to do with the fact that ARPA money has been available, or some kind of COVID money has been available in the past two years to have full days of pre-K, or somehow it's been helping with pre-K, and potentially the speaker actually liked that. So we were trying to find out, is that, you know, something that is still of interest to the speaker? And, and almost so much more than you pushing it, supporting it, if that were to actually come out, and y'all would be the first school district right out of the gate, be like, yeah, we, we, we support this. So that's a good priority, but I don't have any, I have, I don't have any further detail on that. I am trying to get that. On the second priority. So I think the second priority is a good priority, that's for transportation services. That one was a good priority. I did not have much on number three. It is a good idea. I don't think it's an unreasonable thing to ask for. I don't have any background on it. Number four is a very good item as well, but from some information I got from some of my other lobbyist friends who've been working on this for a while, they didn't feel like the appetite was there, even though it seems like a very good thing for transparency. Like, potentially this has been tried before, or some version of it has been tried before. For number five, for number five, the feedback I received on this isn't what I emailed Kevin, and I think we need to double check. It might actually be an irrelevant item at this point. When the legislature rolled the T S I A, the teacher salary increase allocation into the B S A, it's just might not be as much of a request to amend for allow veteran teachers to receive more compensation. Did we ever find out? Have you guys been, had any experience, like, because?
Can I respond to that? So my point in that one, and and I've refined the language, but my point in that one is not that the 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 TSIA. My point is that the the law that came along with that money requires that we pay. Um teachers with a continuing contract twenty five percent less than those that have a. Annual contract.
So teachers that have a recurring, like multi-year contract.
Yes, that tenured, basically tenured teachers, they have to be paid twenty five percent less.
You have a longer contract with us, we don't need to pay you as much, because you have a shorter contract with us, we should pay you more in case you're not here.
I don't know if that's the logic that they spun themselves into when they created it, it's just.
Dr. Weisong has maybe can clear.
I I think that that was Senate Bill seven thirty six back in twenty eleven, and I think the idea was that, again, you have. You have your grandfathered salary schedule, that's your teachers with professional services contracts that are harder to not renew. Versus your uh performance pay teachers hired after twenty eleven who are on annual contract. And I think the notion was that by paying your highly effective teachers more than your uh grandfathered. Teachers, there would be a a financial incentive to give up your professional services contract. Go on annual contract and and take that performance pay. So I think it's a. I think it was designed Mrs. Messenger as a as an incentive.
I'm sure it was.
To to convert, but that's now what has tied districts' hands in in bargaining.
So instead, veteran teachers are getting paid less. So the language that I kind of came up with was.
If they don't choose to go to the professional.
Right. Um to allow teachers to receive compensation based off merit, which would be. If you're highly effective or effective, which we do negotiate in that manner anyways, but it's still two different contracts. Um so to allow teachers compensation to be based off merit rather than contract type.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Ms. Messenger, sit.
My point was to allow teachers to receive compensation based off of merit rather than contract type. That's that's what I would like for that to look like, and I don't know if that, I'm sure there's no appetite to deal with that. I'm I'm I am sure that's true, and 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 maybe the board doesn't want that on there. But for me, that's a big sticking point, because I truly think it's truly unfair to the teachers that have been here for years and years and years. And simply because this law was put into place, I don't know, two years ago, they now have to receive twenty five percent less than someone else. And they're doing a highly effective or ineffective job. It's not like they're an ineffective teacher, that's a different issue, and the contract deals with that. This is, they are still effective or highly effective, but getting less as a raise. Because, so they will never, the the people that are newer will catch up, and they will not be able to catch up at the same rate. Because of this law and the way it's been put in place.
So so don't, anything that I um say that there's no appetite on that, and I don't think you're taking it this way at all. But any- anything I say, unless I say that I think it would be a bad position for you to take, I just don't want you to necessarily spin your wheels. Um my thought is, in hearing you say everything that you just said, and because you've been a teacher, so it's probably, and you have teacher friends, this is probably like a very emotional thing to have to hear. I think you're right, I would maybe approach this more from a compression issue. And we're giving these folks at the bottom raises, and we have these veteran teachers that we can't really pay more because of this little snag we have. And we need to be able to pay these veteran teachers more, we're creating compression, I would probably approach it from that angle, even though it's not really.
It's not a compression issue, but we've dealt with that part already.
Okay, okay, my apologies then.
Met that amount.
My apologies then.
That's why we're now locked into this twenty five percent, because before we weren't. Once we hit it, then it's no longer, to me, it's no longer a compression issue. It is now a a separate issue, compression is another issue, you're right, and that's on this one, and I agree with that. But to me, this is not, it is no longer a compression issue, it is a separate issue based on. Truly contract types, and they could be providing the same quality of work, but they are going to get twenty five percent less.
So so I'm obviously not a teacher. Um the way you explained it to me, and and that may be my negativity in all the details. It sounded like a compression issue, and it may not be, but you gotta remember, decision makers in Tallahassee are not teachers either.
Right.
So if there's a flag that can be flown, where it sounds like a compression issue, that's just. If but but technically, if that's not how it is, then I wouldn't approach it that way.
I think that it's obviously since two thousand eleven, the the legislature said, hey, we don't want these teachers to have thirty years of tenure. You know, and and have, and there are bad teachers out there, that are tenured, and you can't do anything with them, and they're 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 not performing well, or whatever. Um and so when they changed that in eleven to now be annual contracts, they want. That old, old tenures to get off of that, right? So they're giving them money incentive to leave that that guaranteed job. That you're in the tenure, jump over here for the twenty, I personally, whether you believe in the tenure or the annual performance days, whatever. I I don't feel like it's a good practice to play the game of against people in the same profession. You were hired ten years after this person, and you're on a different contract, and they're playing against each other financially.
Right.
You know what I mean? Um that, and that's what I think Ms. Ms. Messenger is talking about, is like, you've got teachers that that. Because you're one year different, if you were hired in two thousand ten rather than eleven, you're both highly effective. But I'm making twenty five percent more, because you're still on that tenure contract, and I'm on the performance base. I do get them wanting to get rid of it, but it, that that to me is the is is the issue. I don't. I don't, and that, I don't think it's gonna be reversed, because it was just brain, it was just done. I, so I don't think um. In my personal opinion, I'm not saying it's not a problem, I don't think it's worth having on here. I know you're gonna rebuttal it, because I don't think it's gonna happen.
I hear you, but this sends a message to our teachers. Even if you believe that. I have had teachers contact me upset, why am I getting less? I'm so upset about what I'm getting paid, I'm like. This sends a message, hey, I hear you, I don't think it's right either, which you just said, you don't think it's right. At least it sends a message to our teachers, we have you, we understand, and we're gonna say something about it.
If I, if I may, I think that's really important about doing this today is not, any one of you can function as a representative of the entire district. Until you guys have done this, right? So we, based on what you said, we don't have any feedback on how they're necessarily gonna feel about this issue. So perhaps, I mean, and I will tell you this, the legislature generally seems to make um policy decisions that are trying to. Um incentivize someone to not be like, when we look at the pension, like they don't want people to keep joining the pension. So we've we've changed the investment plan so many different times to make it seem more aggressive, right? So people pick the investment plan over the pension plan. Um I don't think this is exactly it, but just to kind of use the same type of um, yeah, kind of same thing. If this is something that any other one of you, you know, feel that you would just like to investigate further, I don't think maybe if it's a. You know, putting it far down on your priority list and passing it as a priority, and perhaps, and I was gonna say this later, some of these priorities, passing them is not just this year. Maybe next year as well, so we have a list. Now, any one of these other board members who goes to Tallahassee and has has conversations, doesn't have to just do it on behalf of. You know, them as an individual. Our district has said, we do want to, you know, investigate this further and get some more feedback officially on behalf of the school district. Does that, does that make sense what I'm saying? Like, yes, yes, before me.
Uh I think in addition to sending a message to the teachers, it also is an opportunity to inform legislators. They tend to pass bills without really grasping the consequences, whether they're intended or not.
I've never seen that.
No? I'm sorry, I uh I was mistaken then. Um but no, I so I I do think it should be on here. Um just to, as a, as a talking point, an opportunity to make sure. They know what's going on with our teachers, I mean.
My my question on this thing is. Was the intent of doing that in twenty eleven to slowly, I mean, once the tenured teachers retire. Then it would cycle through compensation based on performance. I don't, how many teachers does it impact our district versus teachers in another? Right, um right, exactly, so.
I just want to say, what changed in twenty eleven, just changed the contract type. Right, before then, teachers were on a continuing contract, they were automatically renewed, unless there were some other issues that are outlined in the contract. Right? That there were, there were mechanisms to deal with it, an ineffective teacher in a contract prior to that. But they changed that. This, what I'm talking about, didn't happen in twenty eleven, this happened, I think, two years ago. When they put in, when they put in the amount of money that said, hey, you need to raise starting teacher pay to forty seven thousand five hundred. Then we had to take the money they gave us and put all of that money, or like ninety five percent, it was a certain percentage, maybe it was seventy five percent. Seventy five percent of the money they gave us to raise pay, we had to use it to raise pay. We could not use it on any other employee. That's the compression issue. When you use that, you're you're losing all of these steps, right? Because you have to raise everything up. We had to do that, but once you hit that forty seven five, then a new part kicks in. And the new part that kicks in says, okay, now that you've hit forty seven five, and you have compressed your schedule to hit the forty seven five. Once you've hit the forty seven five, then this person that's grandfathered has to now make, any raise you give has to be twenty five percent less. Than the one that's on continuing contract. So that really didn't hit us, I think, until last year. Because we had to first spend the time getting the raise in uh up to forty seven five, and once we hit that. That's when this other part came into play for us.
Because the, I mean, just.
That's what we make arbitration for.
Right, right. I mean, the language of this, when you say veteran teachers, I, to me, I think that should say tenured.
Well, the language that I would, this is not, the, this was just, I was talking to Mr. Chapman, this is how he wrote it, I think, just so that we could talk about. But my language is, what I would like for it to say is, allow teachers to re- um receive compensation based off of merit. Rather than contract type.
I'm I'm okay with that.
I'm okay, because I, the veterans, I'm like, okay, veterans, I'm thinking military, you know.
I did, that's what I thought too when I first read it.
Right, so it it's just kind of a little misleading with that language, so I like, I like your amendment to that.
Yeah.
I would say go with that amendment and.
And we really don't have tenure here.
Right.
I mean, it's just that their contract is automatically renewed, it doesn't mean that anybody has looked at it and said, yeah, you may.
Yeah, well, whatever Ms. Messenger just said, I think is a good, better.
Well, and I think if I were meeting with legislators and said, hey, I think you should allow teachers to receive compensation based off of merit rather than contract, they're gonna be like, what do you mean, they're not getting it based off merit? I'll go, well, let me tell you what's really.
Because of the Florida statute number, or whatever, yeah.
But I'd just like to understand, Ms. Messenger has a lot, a more background, because she's been here longer and understands this. So there is a law, and I understand what happened in the, in the compensation thing we just went through. There was a law put in place two years ago that says. You have these teachers that are on the old system, and there are teachers on the new system. And if you provide a, once you've met forty seven thousand five hundred, if you start giving people a higher amount of salary above that. Then you, if you're on the old system, which you might call a tenured system, but a more stable system, let's put it that way. You have to pay them twenty five percent less than the teachers on the performance system, is that, is that what the law says?
Yeah, I'm I'm just trying, I'm actually not.
Okay.
Grave detail, but it seems like.
Yeah, that's what the law says.
Retention, yeah.
Yeah.
I I was just gonna make this comment, and I'm, I said it to Kevin, you know, the legislature last year pretty much said, like, we have an issue with tenure, obviously. So let's expand drop, let's make drop longer, let's make it so veteran teachers want to stay longer, that they can stay in drop. Um so saying that we can also somehow pay these veteran teachers more, I think kind of goes in line with the drop expansion. Um just a, just a thought.
Suppose the, obviously, I mean, it appears that the incentive is to get people off of the tenured system and on to the performance system. But, I mean, if that's the, it's kind of like a C D versus a stock, in the sense of, if you want the security of being in the tenured system. Then there's risk and reward. Uh I can put my money in a C D and I get four percent. I can invest in stocks and maybe, maybe get more, so. I mean, the legislature is basically saying, we we may not like it, but the legislature is saying, we are, we want our system to move to a performance system. Instead of a legislative system. You can stay in the old system if you want, but realize that you have you have more, you have less risk, but you get less reward. I mean, that's what the legislature is intending to say, and then what I think I hear is saying here is, well, that's not fair. Well, it's 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 the direction that the legislature has said that they want to go, they want teachers in the performance system and not in the tenured system.
I think the not fair part is that if I'm in the tenured, and I'm doing highly effective, just like you are, and you're in the, you're not in the tenured, you're in the other one. Why should you get twenty five percent more? And we're both teaching world history, we're both highly effective, great, good scores, whatever. What, just because you chose to be in that one, why should I be? And I'm, I don't disagree with performance base and the merit part of it. But why is it that, the part that I disagree is, is if we're both doing the same thing, we should both be getting the same. I mean, I just.
Yep.
I don't know, it's it's just weird the way they.
And over time.
You get away from it, yeah, of course.
Over time, it's getting fewer and fewer in the uh in the grandfathered area every year.
Well, the answer to the question, um Mr. Chode is, because you chose that the more secure, it's like, it's like that, it's. Uh I'm trying to use that investment analogy, maybe it's working, that you picked the more secure investment, but you get less reward. You, at any day, I assume, you can go, today, I'd like to go to the performance system, you can get your extra twenty five percent. But you've chosen the C D over the the stock, okay, well, there's less risk, but there's less reward, and that's what the state has said they want to do.
Right, but what I'm saying is that, what, and the way I feel, and I don't disagree with with that, the concept, what you're saying. I was saying, the way I feel is that we're pitting teachers now, again, like potentially, you you're you're creating. Potential conflicts amongst staff that, that they don't want to have that risk, but I'm doing just the same job. You know, I I don't, I don't, I don't know.
It is. I just wanted to make it really clear too, that no matter which contract you on, the expectations of the teacher are the same.
Right.
The evaluation system is the same, so they're going through the same evaluation system as their peer, but getting twenty five percent less. And I don't see how that's in any way fair, you know what I mean? I I hear your argument, it's a valid argument, but I don't think that that sends a great message to employees that we want to keep. I mean, yeah, they might have additional security, but I think all teachers have a whole lot of security right now. I I don't think um that that should cost them twenty five percent of their raise every single year, year on year. They have to go through the same thing.
Isn't it like having your cake and eating it too? It's like saying, well, I, I'm only, you know, like a healthcare plan, when you, when you pick a healthcare plan. You, you you say, I'm gonna pay pay more for my healthcare plan, but I get these rewards. It wouldn't, it's not, it wouldn't be fair to, I mean, I guess that, you know, it wouldn't be fair to say, well, I'm on the on the bronze plan, but I want gold benefits. And what we've given the teachers the option is, is saying, you can be on the tenured plan, and here's your benefit package, and it's a choice. Or you can be on the performance plan, and here's your benefit package, and it's a choice. And some teachers have said, I want to be in the tenured package. And these are the benefits that go along with it. And now, they want to, they want their cake and eat it too. They say, I want to be in the tenured system. But I want the same benefits that the people in the performance system have, and I'm gonna use the argument, it's not fair. Because I'm doing the same job as the other teacher in the performance plan. And my answer to them is, you had a choice. There's, there's the tenured package with these benefits, and then there's the performance package with these benefits. You know that if you're in the tenured package, you get twenty five percent less. If you'd like to be in the performance package, you get twenty five percent more. You made your choice, and now for you to say it's not fair, you made your choice.
They didn't make a choice.
What's not fair is that they are, this is the, they were hired in under a contract.
Thank you.
And now we are changing the terms of the contract.
They they didn't make a choice. They have been working for decades. They, they, their choice was made decades ago when they came to work in Manatee County, because in order to be grandfathered, you have to be working in Manatee County. For all those years, right? You can't switch to another county, then you lose that continuing contract, okay? So the people that have it are people that are dedicated to Manatee County. They made the choice decades ago to come work in Manatee County. Under the contract that they had, under the understanding that they had, and then within the last couple of years, that changed on them. They didn't make that choice. They are being, their hand is being forced at this point to make a choice, and that might be true. And I hear what you're saying, but they didn't choose this. They didn't choose any of this. They made their choice decades ago and said, hey, I want this con, I want to work here. I'm gonna have this kind of contract, these are my expectations, and they've watched for year after year after year after year after year. It get chipped away over and over and over and over again. Now to the point where their raise is twenty five percent less than the person that might be in the classroom. Now to the point where their raise is twenty-five percent less than the person that might, might be in the classroom next to them. I can't, you know, it's whatever the board wants to do, and that's fine. This is obviously not the hill I'm gonna die on. I'll keep talking about it, that's fine. I'll get on my soapbox every board meeting and say it out loud. If the board doesn't want to put it on here, that's fine. But, um, I'll still do it anyway. Um, but to me, like, I feel like, even if you didn't feel like there could be movement, which I think there could be, because there's an argument for veterans, teachers, keeping people in there, and you want to attract them, then you should at least make sure they get paid the same as their counterparts. But even if that weren't true, um, even if it wasn't possible to move it, I think it's there, it's important to send a message to our teachers, so, that's just me. I'm not gonna keep debating it, because I will keep debating it.
What's the benefit? Okay, so I hear what you're saying. You're saying that the, the rules of the game changed on them two years ago. So what is the difference between being a tenured teacher and, and a performance teacher as far as paying benefits go? Is there any difference, or?
Other than, other than-
Twenty-five percent less.
Other than the twenty-five percent.
But can they, can teachers opt to go back, can they?
No, once you leave, you cannot go back to tenure.
They cannot go back in, okay. Well, it's a matter of-
So I'll give you an example. I started teaching under that current, the old policy.
Okay.
I left. When I came back after two thousand and eleven, I could not go back to my old one. I was now on performance annual pay.
Is everybody, does everybody now have to go on performance annual?
Yes, everyone has.
So there's no more tenured system?
Which I'm okay if we're phasing that out.
Right.
You know, but now we're saying, hey, the retention bonus you were getting, you're getting twenty-five percent less. I mean, Dr. Weisong, can you, can you elaborate maybe on truly what's the difference in the contract? I mean?
So the, and you, your, your attorney may do a better job than me with the legal differences, but that, that professional services contract has specific things in statute that would have to be met, that the district would have to argue in order to terminate that contract. Whereas on an annual contract, um, every year, right, that, that principal, that supervisor, ultimately superintendent decides whether to recommend you for that next year of employment. So the protections are different. And, you know, to an earlier question, um, yes, at some point down the road, there won't be any professional services contract teachers left. Um, but that, that still is, you know, many years down the road, although every year it gets a little less. So I, I don't know if you want to-
It is the difference between knowing that you have stability in your job and that as long as you don't do any of the things that your teaching certificate can be removed for, or, you know, different, you know, different, uh, all the things that teachers are not supposed to do, like come to school drunk or whatever, you know? As long as you meet basic criteria for doing your job, you get your job back next year under that professional services contract. So it takes some of the politics out of it at a school level, because sometimes principals and vice principals and teachers are like and the teacher could be a wonderful teacher, it's just that somehow the new person, the new admin person who came in just has a different view of the universe that doesn't compute with that particular teacher. So it gives teachers a thought process about wanting to stay in Manatee County and raise their children in Manatee County, because they know if they do their job, and they do their job faithfully, they will get a contract next year. All of the people under the benefits contract now, they're annual, and you know, at the end of the year, if your principal doesn't like you, it's like, oh, not, not offering you another job. You have red hair. I don't like red hair. I mean, they don't really need a reason. And so that, I think, creates some thought process among people who are trying to buy a house, be stable members of the community. Their, you know, their spouse has a job in, at Tropicana or some county or someplace else. There are reasons why that tenured contract is ver- was the model, was very, very attractive, and droves of teachers obviously signed up for it, because that's what we were doing way back when. So there's pros and cons to both, but I get why you wouldn't, if you were fifty-seven years old, you wouldn't want to give up your contin- continuing contract. And it does seem that the, the way, the, the state thought process has now started revolving around different ways to do education. You know, charter schools, alternative schools, all the different ideas about how to make our money go further and our children be better educated. You know, that's, that, that should be the two goals. Um, they're trying a lot of things. And this thing that they tried, um, you know, it we can't see into the future twenty years from now whether we will have a stable workforce of teachers or not, whether this, uh, benefit-oriented, performance-oriented model is going to be the end-all for what we need. But it did change the game for the people who have been here for fifteen and twenty, and maybe even longer. So, uh, it does seem unfair to me. Uh, you know, teaching has never been a profession where you uh, become rich. So it just seems unfair that we're asking our, maybe our most experienced teachers who are teaching at the same performance level as younger and newer teachers to give up that salary only, you know, because, as you said, maybe they had a choice of saying, okay, I'll give up the tenure, but that's a tough decision, I think, for a family to make, to give up the tenure.
Um, in res- in respect of time, we, we still have like four or five things more to go, and, and obviously a couple more items. Um, thank you for that.
So rewording the language would be the best.
So I, I think there's a consensus to have it on there, just reword the language. Um, so if we want to go to number six?
That was the one that I-
I think you said already to take off.
No, no, uh, Creator Consortium took it off. Um, I'd want to leave it on.
I'm not in favor of that.
What, uh, it's, what you're, go ahead, you, keep going with how you were doing it before, with telling us what your thoughts are, things like that.
On, on number six, um, uh, so there's been some pushes by the legislature to make any kind of referendums uh, have to stand two, um, votes. Uh, I don't know if y'all saw, maybe two years ago, for just general constitutional changes, they wanted to make a constitutional change in order for it to take effect. It would have to withstand two ballots, not just one. Um, so doing almost the reverse, allowing something to skip one, um, on a, on a referendum, um, may not necessarily, uh, go over as best as it could in Tallahassee. However, I think saying only if the referendum receives more than sixty percent of a vote in a previous general election um, is a good, um, parameter to offer that. And I would additionally talk about the general cost. Um, I mean, I guess if a supervisor election's putting a ballot out again anyways, what is the cost? But I'm sure there's some level of cost that goes into running it, um, you know, e- every single time. Um, and that would be saved if the, the residents of this county overwhelmingly are like, yes, um, let's not have to do that again. Y- yes, ma'am.
I'm just waiting for you to finish, so I can-
Yeah, uh, do we want him to go down, or, or do you want to start talking about every single one? That's fine.
This, this might be more helpful for y'all. At, at the end of this, I told Kevin this, we had an email exchange about this. I said, number two for transportation would be a good push at the end of the day. It's a funding item overall. I was really trying to do some policy items, but I think this would be well-received. Um, a lot of these things we've discussed, um, like amending veteran teachers, that, that is in some, I mean, obviously all policy and budget combines, but it's more of a budgetary thing about pay. If you have anything on here, like, like even number three, increased funding for teacher aid positions, that is a funding item, and I think this is good. But there's all kinds of policy things about, like, where teachers can't do this, or the school board, we can get into public records, can't do this thing. Things that are not specifically tied to, um, funding, I think is important for you guys to consider as well. I don't want to see your top three priorities be, um, all things that are directly tied to funding.
Gotcha. Okay, um, well-
Number six.
We could talk about number six.
Can I talk, uh, explain why I wanted this on here? As we went through the budget process, we saw that the, the local percentage of, of funding for the school district keeps going up. Um, local is now paying more than, more than the state. And so we, we, along with a lot of other districts, are becoming very dependent on, on the referendum money. And if our community embraces it, demonstrate, I would love to see it, whether, what, regardless, you know, to be, to be a longer period, but, um, our, for example, our sales tax is fifteen years. Um, but the fact that our district said, you know, overwhelmingly, we support funding more for, putting in more for education. Um, I would love to see us not have to do this every four years. Um, this year, we're doing it every three years. Um, it is expensive, it's a huge time, time-intensive, um, you know, it's just, um, and, and we can't give up, we, we, we are dependent on that, as are other districts, so.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
The way I read this, it's saying that if it got more than sixty percent in a previous
Mm-hmm.
general election. So let's say we went out next year, and it did get sixty-one percent. What you're saying is that in four years, when they, when you go up for a vote again, that it would be for eight years. Or are you saying that when it-
Oh, I'm saying that if, if we pass it by sixty-one percent, um, I'm not even sure how you would word it on the ballot, but, um, but that we wouldn't have to go again in twenty-twenty-eight. We, it would be for, until twenty, twenty-thirty-two.
I just kind of wondered what the ballot, I'm gonna guess.
Yeah, I did, now, yeah, now that you're saying that, that will be tricky.
Yeah, because it's like, is it four or is it eight? I mean, people wouldn't know what they're voting for.
Right.
I-
Hmm, okay.
Do you know what I'm saying?
I'm actually against this item. Um, I don't, for one, when you're saying sixty percent, it passed by sixty, whatever percent last time, it was a special election. It was in August, and the voter turnout rate was lower than it is in a general. So there's always that big, oh, we've got it up by almost seventy percent. Well, if you did, who turned out, it was the employees, the families, and, um, everybody connected to the district versus people who were doing everyday jobs, landscaping and other, uh, professions, didn't even vote. So putting this on the general, this is the first time that this will be on a general ballot.
Yeah.
So having it saying, oh, if we pass it by sixty percent, we won't have to do this again. The cost associated to doing this on a general ballot is not near the amount it was for doing it on two special election ballots to get this passed. This is just, it's gonna be another line item on the ballot with everything else. So I don't see where saying, oh, if we get sixty percent, it's gonna save us money, it's gonna do this. This is a performance-based referendum by, from when it was initially, uh, put out by retention and, um, all the other measurables that we put into, into place. I am not in favor of this at all. I don't even think it should be on here, in my opinion.
But what if it passes at more than sixty percent on the general? I'm not talking about the special election, I'm talking about the, about the, you know, it's gonna be-
I would say if it pass, if it passes over sixty percent in a general, then I would be perhaps in favor of doing that the next cycle. But again, this has all been performance-based referendum. We're going to retain teachers, we're going to pay them more, we're going to do this for STEM, we're gonna do this for arts. And then it was even suggested to abolish the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee. This referendum was all based on a need. We're fulfilling the need, but it's, it's results-driven. So I am, yeah, I don't think that that should be even on here. Uh, the referendum should go before the voters every four years, in my opinion. If we're not spending it and, uh, getting performance from that referendum in the right ways, then, you know, I'm sure the voters are not gonna say, well, I know they want half cent pass for fifteen years, but that's, that's a little lump sum when you go to the store, you're getting, part of that money's coming to us. Um, but this is actually levied on your tax bill. And with, right now, the economy and all of the, uh, inflation, I just don't want to, uh, bound the taxpayers by saying, oh, you approved it by sixty-nine percent on a special election, let's get it to sixty percent, and we want to do this again. That will be the selling, that, I'm, I can see it right now, that's gonna be the, the pitch.
It doesn't say that.
I'm telling you, I'm not saying this, not saying it as legislative, but I can see that being the sales pitch out to the public.
Didn't it, isn't, so, didn't the law say, doesn't the law say now that we have to have these
Right.
in conjunction with general elections? That's the law now.
Yes, so I don't know why, yeah, I, I don't even know why that would even be.
So if they pass at sixty percent in a, that's what it says, right?
General election.
No, they're-
General election.
Twenty-four. No, she is saying-
Next four years, they just don't do it.
She is, what Ms. Foreman is saying, if it passes in twenty-four with a sixty percent or greater margin, we don't have to do it for another
Eight.
eight years.
Right.
But any rep, any special referendum by statute, from what I understand, is every four years.
Right.
Not the sales tax.
So, right.
Well, they just said the refer, they just, they just did that one last session, I believe.
Last session, right. So I'm not in support of this at all. I don't think it even, should even be on here, because I can hear the sales pitch out there to get it to pass. Oh, we need it, we need it, gotta have, well, I understand we need it, but I don't want to go out there and say-
My, my thought process is, I don't care about last, like, I don't care about the last time we passed it or whatever, this is all about future.
Well, that's what it's being based on.
No, it's not.
No, it never said anything about last.
That Ms. Foreman just said, oh, it, but the last time it was on a ballot, it passed at sixty-nine percent.
I look at it as this. Sarasota County for twenty years has passed this thing by seventy-nine, eighty percent. Why should they have to continually talk about it and do it if their county has felt like, and so, so I'm not-
They had it on a general.
But, uh, that's fine. I'm not, we're not, I'm not debating, I don't, I don't think this should be on here, because I don't disagree with it. I think that it's not worth, I just, I don't think there's an appetite that's gonna be for us to push this. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I don't think it should be on here because of, of, they just, last session had a big push about the referendums. I don't think they're gonna tweak it. Um, I do, but I, I get your point. If, if your county, there's really no reason for, like, a Sarasota County who passes it every time by eighty percent, and I know it's on the general election, but just, they pass it consistently. Well, no, it wasn't on the general election, there's-
They always have a special.
They do have a special election for it.
Always have a special.
Regardless, why continue to, so that's, I, that's your feeling behind it, is why do we have to fight it? I, I agree, though, that we, I don't think it should be on here, because I think it's, it would be an item to talk about that I just don't see any traction, because of the law that was just passed. That's just my personal feeling, obviously. So, I, I don't know, so is that something that we, as a board, I mean, I don't know the consensus yet here. What, do we want this on here or not?
I'm kind of neutral about it. I mean, I, 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 I agree with what you just said, there's probably not an appetite for it, because it was just said that we have to have it in a general election, and it has to be every four years. And I don't know, but what do you guys think? There's an appetite for it?
I'm just gonna recommend, maybe it's something in the future legislative priority.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That's all I was gonna say, maybe make sure you look at it like case.
This year will probably be a better year for it.
Results, and then-
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, next, because then you have a different cycle of potential.
Right, in the twenty-two, after, I mean, if this wasn't coming up
I'll be here next year first.
Right, it would be, maybe a different, I might have a different, uh, opinion. But with this, I don't want that to be the selling item, and that's what the selling, I can just hear the, uh, pitch out there. The flyers going out, it was approved by this. I just- I just, and if we do this-
But you gotta understand too, this, this legislative party is not, means nothing if the state doesn't approve it.
I understand that.
So I don't know what the pitching, so you're, you're, you're talking about what we've done in the past. Uh, it doesn't matter, we, it's, we're not putting it on.
Let's just move it.
I don't number seven, I just wanna make sure we're moving time-wise here.
This one came from uh, you all.
Number seven?
Oh, about the quorum for, for audit committee.
Yeah, that was, I wonder who put that one on.
Well, on any of them.
Who put that on there?
Even CFAC has that issue, right?
Yeah, yeah, we all do and um-
I think it's ridiculous they can't even-
The Children's Services Advisory Board has the same issue.
Why can we not be-
They can't get a quorum to even do business because people are on, online, but not in person.
That's ridiculous. I, I, I think-
I think, uh, yeah, I don't, virtually, you know, anybody that is, they're virtual, should be, they should be on Teams and we should be able to see that they're participating, right? Is that what you're saying?
Andrew, what, what do you guys think?
I, it sounds like it's, it may be something I can explore with our council uh, that it could be a, something we could look at our by, at your bylaws.
Okay.
Right, our own policy, I don't think it needs to be on here.
Perhaps I could uh, explore that offline with uh-
Uh, Mr. Dye has been the one to-
I thought he did say that, like, it was like a year, so like, I thought he was like, no, it says it.
Well, right, right now, the law says you have to have an in-person quorum to uh, for a meeting, but it, once you have that in-person quorum, everybody else can just join by Teams or Zoom or-
I think our, our issue was, you know, you, you could, you had audit committee, CFAC, that they could meet, but not in person. So now you've got a quorum in present at a meeting using Teams and Zoom, but that doesn't count.
That doesn't count.
And that's, that's where we were kinda like, mm.
But even if you have a couple of, of your members there in person, you know, but you don't have a quorum in person, you know, to add people-
I just think in this day and age now, how, how often we're using the Teams and Zoom?
Yeah, as, as long as it's public. So maybe I, I'll work with uh, Ms. Petroff and Mr. Dye just to get the right statute and, and if you all are in consensus and just make, award it more so that there's a statute in there and, and the exact phrase that we, that we'd like-
I'm fine with having that.
I, I just think that it-
Cause we do have Mr. Gregory, remember, is the chair of judiciary.
Right.
Uh, and, and this could be something of interest.
Saying that's not funding, that, that is easily, could easily like, uh, yeah, they should, why would we not do this?
As long as the public can see the member, you know, I would-
The only good way to um, take a look at it from a different lens would be what are our quorum requirements for each of these committees? And is there any room to look, to take a harder look at that, to, to how we define a quorum? Cause usually you define a quorum as, you know, the majority of the people. But, you know, if you've got these very, very large committees, you know, fifteen or eighteen people committees, then maybe the quorum isn't ten. Um, or whatever.
Yeah, okay. I would, I would say at the board, if you guys are okay, I'd like just have Mr. Chapman research it and see.
Okay.
And, and then we can add it on or just talk about it.
And I can explore it in the policy world too.
Right.
Back to you with the policy change, your bylaw change.
Okay.
It was Ms. Petroff's point about our own bylaw reducing a quorum, perhaps if that's allowable by law.
Okay. Andrew, number-
Number eight.
Yeah.
Again, something you, you all talk about a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with it.
They mandated us to do something.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with it, but I think it kinda sticks with everything else that when we ask for more money, it, it is this. But I agree, I mean, I think we all agree. If you're mandating and make sure we do this, it'd be nice to be paid for it.
Number nine is Mr. Chode, I think that was kind of your um-
Um, yeah, but I didn't know how a pre, I don't know how funding, I'm ignorant to the funding of the pre-apprenticeship, I mean, I, the pre-apprent- apprenticeship program, I think would be, is phenomenal. I'll talk about a little more, but I don't know how the, how necessarily funding would work on that, so.
Yeah, and there's, there's a bill that just passed that may have some funding in there for that.
Okay.
So uh, it looks like SB two forty, so.
Yeah, so we don't have to have that on there, but just, um, because we're, we're working-
So how much is that?
We're working, I'll explain my other stuff a little bit, but I don't think there's necessarily, I mean, I guess maybe Dr. Weisong could maybe talk about it a little bit, but, I mean, I guess if, if we're looking at a pre-apprenticeship program in your, in your trades and at, you know, a technical college, et cetera, that staffing could be needed if more kids wanted to jump into a, a pre-apprenticeship program.
We have on the, you know, we have OGT, OJ-
Right, right. But typically in a, in apprenticeship program, your business that has that apprinter, apprentice is paying for the, them to go to MTC. So in theory, with theory, it may work the same way, I don't know. I mean, this is a bigger item than I think we can kinda like ask for us funding, cause I just don't, you know, I don't know how it works.
Well, wouldn't it need to be a, an appropriation request and be specific? You know, what, what trade are you talking about?
Yeah, so I'm gonna get more into the appropriation with that pre-apprenticeship. So to be honest with you, I think we can probably just exit this and I'll talk about the more pre-apprenticeship thing in a minute.
Okay.
Number ten was um, Mr. Tatum, which
Yep.
Could relate a little bit to number seven, a little bit, just, just about
Yeah.
You know, meetings and, in general.
I would like to know, I know, I know what your thoughts on it for sure. I would like to know, Andrew, what do you, I mean, what are your thoughts on sunshine laws? Appet, like, has it ever, I mean, I don't know, in the circles, is it being talked about? There, is there any change, I mean, I, I don't know.
This is a hard thing for me personally because of all the folks like you I represent. Somebody asked me once, what is, you know, like a SWOT analysis? What's the biggest weakness of a county commission? I said that not one of you can talk to the other one without sunshine, right? So personally, I, I, I wish it could get moved. I have heard one inkling about this last year for county and city governments. Um, and it was, I never heard anything further about it. I think that your peer government entities are clamoring to have this done as well. Um, so making this a, a priority, I don't, I don't necessarily feel like is a bad thing. To the point where like, making it a priority allows us to fully go investigate this, allows Mr. Choke to go to Commissioner Diaz on behalf of the school district and not just on behalf of him and say,
I agree with you.
Can we get, can, yeah, can we get DOE support on this? It allows y'all to say, Governor, can we get some support on this? I, I don't think it makes you look, um, I don't, I, I don't think it's a bad priority at all.
I know Mr. Gregory is in favor of some modifications. I mean, he's stated that publicly and-
If you, but does he wanna go forward with it?
Yeah.
Does he wanna?
Uh, he said that publicly that he's willing to consider going forward with it, so, yeah.
People don't trust government, period. They don't trust our teachers, they don't trust us, they don't trust our county commission. And for, so I think the timing is terrible. Uh, whether you agree with, you know, that, that something needs to be done to uh, to loosen up the sunshine laws. But I personally am very much opposed to it. You know, I, I, I can't support this. We, you know, we, we've got to have our governance in the sunshine. People need to be able to see what's going on, what we're talking about. You know, get a, get a feel for what their elected officials are, you know, what they're thinking about. So um, so no, I, I think, you know, for example, Mr. Tatum, yesterday, you know, you, you were concerned that you couldn't talk in the, in the lunch with someone about curriculum because there were school board members in the room. That's, that, that wasn't, I, that wasn't true. I mean, as long as we weren't engaging, you know, it, then it was not, it would not be a violation of sunshine.
Mr. Dye would have a different opinion about that. He's told me not to do that specifically. Do not engage with other, do not speak to other people in a public forum about school board matters because it could be viewed as you are communicating. You, you may say, well, a dialogue is a two-way dialogue. Well, it could be viewed as you are listening to me giving you my opinion. So there is a dialogue going on, it's one way.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna debate sunshine with you, but, but, but no, I believe that we need to be transparent, be in the public and um-
Do you understand the, the uh, the time? There, there's a lot of things going, number one, it's, it's really, no other business would operate like this. It doesn't build trust between people. It wastes an incredible amount of time from the staff, for instance, to have to have five different board meetings. We can't, when we go to conferences and trainings and things like that, it limits our ability to speak to each other, to speak honestly to each other about the work that we're doing, to talk to vendors who uh, you know, would like to provide a product to us and we'd like to be, know more about their product. We in theory can't talk to them unless they talk, we talk to the vendors, each one individually. Uh, there's, there's margins around the edges here that can be tweaked without destroying the idea that most of our business is done in the public. So for instance, when we go to leadership trainings, when we go to conferences, if it's in the public already, like yesterday where, you're right, there shouldn't be any reason. That was public, we could publicly notice that, we could say it's being videoed and, and, and make sure that, that those exceptions are put in there. So, you know, we're not talking about doing away with the sunshine laws. We're talking about making some marginal changes to make us more effective as a governing body.
Ms. Messenger had her, you know?
I was just kind of editing the language because I, I'm not really inclined to change a whole lot of sunshine law personally cause I think it's a bad look for us to even try to tackle that. Um, but what if it were to say something along the lines of review and modify current sunshine laws to create exceptions for public meetings and training?
And maybe even the word clarify instead of modify.
Okay, clarify.
Yeah, like more allowed at a conference.
From the attorney general, the state attorney, you know, something like that, instead of modify, clarify maybe.
I just think that really clearly defines the goal, which is public meetings and things like that, which I think is, is valid, right? But then it also makes it also clear that we're not seeking to do something behind the scenes cause that's not, I don't think that sounds like that's even your goal. Just like in an event like that, you wanna be able to feel comfortable talking, I, I understand. Uh, and you're right, maybe the word clarify is more appropriate because then we'd have a clearer understanding of what that is. But just, it, to me, I just want it to be succinct and clear and targeted because I think if it's targeted, it would, it, it would send a better message to the community when we have this. So, so just what I was saying was review and clarify current sunshine laws to create exceptions for public events and training.
I could support that.
Conferences?
Yeah.
I consider that as training.
I would say conferences are training.
I mean, I can do training slash conferences, but to me, like, training is a conference, but that's, I mean, I, I, the distinction is-
But it's gotta be a public meeting.
Yeah, in Washington, they use the term widely attended public event.
Okay.
It's an event attended by a wide
Well-
Audience.
But we could run off to a little room on the side.
I mean, I-
That's what legislators do all the time.
Or we could sit at our table.
That's why we're seeking clarification.
Right, that's, I, I would agree with that. Ms. Br-
Yeah, um. I support this because um, there's only two entities that cannot talk to each other. It's school board and county commission. The legislators and senators, house members, everybody. You, we've all been up there and we've seen how they go about, well, you have to work the issue to get what is best for the district. And, you know,
The thing is-
This constant one person telling everybody what's going on, this and all these circles you've gotta go through is so, it's so hard sometimes to have that communication, the open communication.
Well, let me, in, 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 in former time, you're for this, right? Are you for-
I support this.
Are you for a little bit tweak of the, of the language? Are you, it's, this is something you brought up. I'm, I'm in support of tweaking sunshine as well, especially what you're saying here with training, you know, all those that we don't feel like, oh my gosh, we can't even talk to each other with a vendor talking about a security fencing or something.
I like, I, I just like the language that says the same laws that apply to legislators.
And realize too that there are other states, it's, there are many other states that have their quorum, their, their sunshine law says you can't meet in a quorum. But if you meet in less than a quorum, then it works for them.
Yeah, I mean, I can even see that too, I see that.
And that's why you're-
I don't, I think taking it, tell me if I'm wrong. I think taking it like little by little is better than saying, like, let us do exactly what the legislature, because I, that's maybe harder for them to swallow and pass than, hey, we're okay with you guys doing conferences to get, you know, certain things. You know what I mean? Again, I'm looking for victories, cause I do think they're somewhat ridiculous and, and constraining and things.
And I, and I think Mr. Gregory has it, had, asked Mr. Tatum, show me in the statute what needs to be changed and I'll, you know, go and fight for it. So maybe the same example as one of these others. I can work with council, look at the statute and maybe add a few words in there to suggest something to, you know, to Mr. Gregory.
I think you're concise, exactly right, Ms. Messenger's saying.
Show a clarification.
As long as it's me-
And, and state the statute that is there, like, like you did in number two.
Needs to be just-
Right.
Shall instead of must.
Cause as, you know, as-
They're going the other way.
As, you know, as legislative staffers, the last thing you want is here, do this for us. You, you, you wanna give the legislative aide the answer, right? So that they can go, oh, that makes sense and, and keep the process moving. So any way we can keep using exact language and where an actual edit is, it always helps.
Consensus to at least look into like how the language looks. And maybe pick a spot. I mean, I don't think the intent here is to give it a sunshine law altogether. It's, it's trying to tweak some of this, which I'm, I'm absolutely in favor for.
Right.
Well, I'm against it, but
Okay.
Just wanna be on record.
Um, so yeah, so you can go ahead and-
And this will come back to you, you know, for you to bless, so.
I don't know who did eleven, I'm curious about that.
Uh, number eleven?
Uh-
It might've been me, but this is too big of a discussion to have right now. This is a whole, it's just, it's a whole, the SE situ-
Gotcha.
It's just too big of a, there's no point in talking about it in this forum.
Okay.
And that might be more federal than-
Do you want this on here or not then?
No, uh-
So we're gonna remove this?
I, I think I put this on maybe a couple of months ago, I was talking to Mr. Chapman about it, but it's just, when you start to look at the issue, it's just the whole state needs to-
That's a conversation I don't-
Federal and-
Superintendent.
So, so then let me go back to this. So it, it looks, it looks like um, you know, one, one, I, I, this is what I wrote, uh, one, two,
Five.
Five, seven is a question mark, we're gonna look back at. Ten is a question mark, we're gonna look back at as we get language settled and things like that.
So we're not doing eight?
I also, eight, I mean, that's just kind of in the same language as getting fully funded.
All right, so take out eight.
FFE and all that, yeah. My, my question we talked about earlier though with um, that I wrote down for the Greater Consortium, uh, the two-point, going back to two-point O capital outlay. Is that something that as, I mean, consortium has it, is that something we would like to say? And one of the reasons why is this, and you're adding charter to it now.
Yeah.
We need to go back to where it was two-point O. Is that something from a board that we would like to add?
From one point five to two point one is our-
Capital outlay. So instead of it being a one point five, Millidge, we go back to two-point O.
Yep.
I mean, I'm just gonna say that their language is restore the discretionary two-point, and I like the word restore. Just restore the discretionary two, two mil levy for capital purposes for such as school maintenance, property and casualty insurance premiums, technology needs, including testing and other critical capital or operational needs. But it's also very clear that it's, it is now even more needed because of this share of capital to charter schools.
Okay, I like their language.
I do too.
Yep.
But I just wanna say there's more to it than just those things that are even stated. I don't think we need necessarily to add them, but when we have conversations, it needs to also be said. It is also because of this.
Okay, no, I agree with that.
Yeah.
We, we good? Okay, so we'll add that two-point O. And then, I don't know where we, where do we, where do we fall on the state health plan? Did we want to try to tackle that or, or not?
I mean, it's on here.
No.
It's on the consortium.
Let the, let the colleges-
Duke it out, okay.
Duke it out and then we'll-
Andrew has one last point to make that he's heard.
Okay, and then I've got, I'll do my appropriation requesting here.
Yes, sir. Um, so actually yesterday, it's very good that we're timing this happening today. Yesterday, the Senate president uh, authored a memo to Senator saying that she wants to run a, a school board deregulation bill. Um, it's in line, well, don't get too excited just yet, hold on. It's in line with House Bill one. In House Bill one, there was a listening tour that was directed for DOE to do, you guys saw that, to accept uh, feedback from teachers and stakeholders and parents and everybody under the sun who, you know, wants to talk about regulation on, on schools generally. But she did author a memo to um, all other senators that she plans on doing that. Um, so the reason I bring all that up is that, that's good, that's wonderful. Um, and what do we want to try to make sure is in that bill? Um, the important thing is um, to try, and I'm trying to figure exactly when the listening tour is happening and I keep calling it a listening tour, I don't think that's really what it is.[1785.01] I thought it was this month or next month. Um, and that's for DOE to make their recommendations to be part of that bill. There's nothing stopping you guys from making your own recommendations and sending them straight to, sending them to your local senator to review them to send to her. I would, that's probably a good, good thing to do, I would, because that's going to be the best way for him to go and say, this is what my school board wants.
It's all based on their, of what they HB1 has done.
Yeah, I will find that language again, actually before I leave, and I will send it to you guys all again to see exactly what that language was.
I don't want us to sit here and talk about something that's not part of, they're going to listen to, like, that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah.
But we sat here for 30 minutes.
Let me, actually, um.
I think we need more direction.
30 minutes? I could give you a list.
Well, I know, well, that's what I'm saying, I just say we need more direction of like what it is they're wanting to hear about.
Let me, well.
Enticement on HB1, wasn't it? It's going like, okay, okay, school districts, we're going to, you know, we'll deregulate some things for you.
It was DOE, listen to what everybody has to say and make recommendations back to us on what we could do to improve it. I can go find the exact language, we can talk about the appropriation. I will find the language and then if it's okay for me to come back up here in between another item and tell you or just I can give it to Kevin on my way out or something.
Yeah, that, that.
We need to have a workshop on.
Yeah, I mean, that's something, I think, yeah, that's bigger than, yeah.
The list is so long.
Well, that, well, that's what I mean, I mean, it could, that's what I, and I don't want to discuss things that's not privy to that. Again, all of a sudden, we're talking about, you know, whatever, and it's not, they're not, they don't even care about that.
Dr. Weisong.
Chairman, I was just going to say, we're, we're, we are scheduled as a cabinet to talk about brainstorming that deregulation list from a staff perspective.
Good.
We'll be happy to do that exercise and, and then I'll share it with the board.
That'd be great.
We're looking forward to that conversation as a leadership team.
Great, awesome. So the last, the last thing I have for this, and then we're going to, we're going to take a recess. The last thing I have, the appropriation request is kind of tweaked and changed now that, since last meeting with Mr. Chapman. And from the board, all I would request is a chance to allow Dr. Weisong, Mr. Chapman, most likely Mr. Wagner, Mr. Rinaldi, et cetera. Allow the staff to come up with some language and probably price point, obviously however many millions we're going to ask for. What I'm looking for, what my thought process and idea is, is, is it happened from talking with Dr. Her, with Mr. Wagner, talking with, um, Sharon Holstrom at the EDC, and some of the things in aviation world that obviously we're now trying to, we are getting into with our, our, um, uh, MTC program. We still don't have the, enough funding to, to really finish that program, number one. Number, the site, et cetera, the equipment, et cetera. And, and so my ask would be for some more money for that, but also in a bigger picture, I would like to be able to, for years we have on the capital plan, I don't know exactly where it stands, I don't remember, where the, the, the MTC second building, the addition to MCC, MCC, MTC, I'm aging myself there. The addition of MTC was put on the, the, you know, capital plan, I, I mean, years ago, several years ago, I think. Um, and they, they have some money saved up for it to, to spend on it. I would like for us to be able to, to take that building, look at that building as more of just, I know they needed classrooms for adult ed, but I want, and we talked with Mr. Wagner, I think that it's an opportunity, and this goes back to my pre-apprenticeship program. I think it's an opportunity to, for that building to get the funding for that, to be able to create programming in there and label it, and, and again, this is the language where I'm not, this is not, where I'm, I don't know what to call it. But my thought is calling it like a, like a, a business incubator, a space that we are going to use for business, aviation, are, a, a place that when we ask them for X amount of million, millions of dollars to help fund, to build this, this is going to be a place where the pre-apprenticeship program can happen, where the students can meet with businesses, businesses being able to use it to recruit. So, so my, my thought process is to allow the staff to say, because we don't really have like major appropriation requests, like we did last year with Guy Harvey and this. I think going, we didn't get all we wanted or needed for the aviation, so that's part of the, the ask. But, um, I think that if we were to be able to, to create this, this pre-apprenticeship program through Career Source, through MTC, the stuff we're doing with aviation, that we could build, build a, a center there that could be really special. And, and obviously, the governor and legislature has been about career readiness and getting those things, you know, push, you know, having those more at the forefront. And I think that, that if we were to do this correctly and, and hopefully language wise and that sort of thing, I think we could potentially get the funding for this building and take it off of our capital request and make it something that we really need and, and have bring in the private industry, those HVAC, all those, the construction, all those people that need the employees. I think we could have something very unique. And, um, so that's, that's with your blessing to say, yes, hey, go ahead, I'm not saying we got to put it on here right now because we don't even know what it is, right? But I would like just for Dr. Weisong and the staff to just kind of say, here, and, and talk to Wagner, Ms. Wagner, just say, here's what we're, here's the thoughts, the ideas, here's what we think it would be, whatever, and then we can come back to us and say, is this really what we're wanting to do or not and ask for?
Is this separate of the aviation thing or conjunction with?
In conjunction.
Same building that's out by.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, are you saying building wise? No, so you're, so the aviation, the AMP school that we're building in, and anyone else can correct me obviously if I'm wrong, at the, the airport, this is different than what I'm suggesting.
Okay, all right.
So what I'm suggesting is, now, I do believe that, that second building in MTC, it's going to be on the north, well, as of now, the design's on the north side. Brayden River, then, then right down the north side. I do believe that we can create, and, and Dr. Weisong and I have discussed this, and they had it at Seminole, was some aviation education opportunities for the kids that then would feed our MTC school, right? Or potentially feed an aeronautical engineering school at USF, Sarasota, Manatee. So I think that you could do things in that building and you could partner with Emory Riddle, and maybe you do some flight simulating stuff. And again, this building wouldn't be specifically for one thing, and this is where the creativity is of like, this is an incubator of many sorts of things. I don't know, again, I don't know what else to call it, but incubator, I keep going back to that. Because it's not just about aviation, it can be about the, the pre-apprenticeship programs, adult ed is going to be in there that Mr. Wagner needs space for. So it's going to be a lot of different things. And so that, that, that would be my ask for the board is to allow them to just kind of look into this and then come back with us and say, we think to finish aviation and do this is X amount of dollars, is this something that we want to push? So, I mean, with y'all's blessing, I would say.
One question, I like your idea.
And I don't mean I have all the answers, whatever ideas either.
Both of you, like, but if we come back and go, we want $10 million or $12 million, I mean, what's the, what's the reasonable size of a request for this type of thing?
Yes, for more you get less.
I don't want to give Andrew a heart attack. So, uh, we have, we owe, we owe the House and Senate our, our appropriation request very soon, September 15th, 18th, somewhere in there. So we'll get, we'll get on this right away if, if you all agree. But we'll see what that number is. It, it may be is, you know, $10 million or something, but, look, we've been very successful so far. Due, due large part to the guy standing next to me, behind me. You know, Guy Harvey, 2 million, we had, um, you know, 5.5 million, we've had WAZ Ed, so, uh, you know, very successful. And, and also due to our delegation, our delegation is more senior now. Chairs of committees and things like that, up next for senate president one day. And, and then of course, if you add, you know, the lobbying team at the airport, you know, we now have Senator Gruders now is, represents part of Manatee County. So, um, we have another house member as well. So, uh, you know, I know talking with Andrew, that, that amount may be shocking at first to maybe some staff, but I think with, with all, you know, the efforts of elected officials and, and meetings, that we'll see where it goes, you know.
And I, and I don't know the number mainly because like, I know Mr. Wagner is, is, is put in for grant, you know, request. And there may be some of, of those avenues that we need to look for to, to maybe chip away at some of the total amount, but, um.
Well, we shouldn't be looking at it as a total. I mean, you look at, you look at the county's legislative asks, they go, ask for millions here, millions here, millions here. You know, it's, it's a whole lot easier to, to break it down and, you know, and, and ask for, ask for $10 million and.
And, and maybe get eight.
Five million dollar chunks.
That's what I was just saying, aim high to your terms.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, you know, they might say, well, we can't give you the 10, but we can give you the eight, when we really, you know. Okay, that's going to be, that would be great, you know, so.
And my, my, the vision, the vision behind it too is, is if you get, if we can create these, these potential pre-apprenticeship programs that are going to then employ, you know, your, your construction, your, your medical, all these types of things potentially, those entities are going to want to say, yes, we want this.
Right.
And yes, we will lobby ourselves as well to try to get this thing. That, that's my thinking behind it.
Yeah, like that hospital, the medical.
Dr. Weisong?
Yeah, and, and all of those professions that we need skilled labor for.
Yeah, board members, I think that in, in listening to a little bit of the kind of vision that the chairman and Mr. Wagner and some others on the team have been talking about, you know, it's not a single building request or a single programming request, which is what a lot of these appropriations are. This is really an ecosystem request.
Right.
It's a, it, it's a, it's a little bit of a different concept. And so it will take more funding, it's again, because it's not a single construction, you know, or, or single curriculum initiative. But I, I think the key is we're talking about linking multiple partners, right? With different networks of influence. We're also talking about a bigger dollar amount, which means very important that, that all five of you be excited about the concept.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Because we will need each of your networks
Yep.
to make a compelling case, because it's not just a small amount of money, it, it will be a significant commitment. So I think it's a little different maybe from prior appropriation requests in that you've got more stakeholders, larger scope, and the, 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 the board's interface through each of your networks is going to be very important on this. So, I, I, and then I would also, I, I think sometimes when you do these, it, it would be a major component of your legislative platform as opposed to that longer laundry list of things. Because we would say, this is what's really important to us right now. We're, we're trying to accomplish the state's workforce priorities in a very manatee way.
Right.
And I think attaching it to, back to, I love that you say this, the states, I mean, that, if we can attach it back to them getting a win too, we may be able to get some other wins with our, with our staff. I mean, I don't care who comes, takes a picture and rim and cuts with it. So I'm going to get it.
Also a very senior member of the House of, in Washington, Vern, Vern Buchanan.
Sure, absolutely, there may be some federal stuff, absolutely.
Senators as well.
Oh, yeah, maybe even on the federal side, yeah.
And, and, you know, he, he does represent SRQ, you know, the airport as well, so.
Right.
Have we considered getting a federal lobbyist? You know, there are, there are people, you know, that talk about it at the FASB conferences.
That's something I would, I would look into.
Yeah, I, I think we've had a good.
There is some out there.
We can explore that, I mean, I think we have a good relationship with Congressman Buchanan, obviously, he just had a new district director that we, we know well, one retired, we knew very well. So, um, I think we're fortunate to have a very senior member of the US House of Representatives. And sometimes that, that you have to weigh sometimes when you're going to hire a, a federal lobbyist because you, you have somebody who, who actually is in the leadership in, in the House and you have a very senior US senators as well, but that's something we can.
Well, can he recommend for someone to help, help lobby for us, you know, someone who will work with him, not as, as opposed against him?
There's some connections out there that we can make for federal.
Okay, so Andrew, thank you very much for coming and being actually on the call Tuesday too, and appreciate all your effort.
And I was able to share that language with Kevin.
Okay, good.
I won't, we can add it just yet in case y'all are.
Okay, awesome. Uh, board, we're going to take a 10 minute recess, so 11:50, we're back. So I think, is there anything in there for lunch or no? Yeah, so if you want to grab that, grab it now, we can work as we move to everything.
[music]
All right, welcome back, um, after a quick recess and some lunch on the dais. Um, okay, I wanna move to the, to the superintendent evaluation goals. I told you in Tuesday's meeting that, you know, I, I did some, asked FSBA, hey, do you guys have any, any other districts that are doing evaluations based on goals instead of necessary performance and things like that? And so they sent me, sent me over the two that I sent you from Pinellas and Charlotte. And I guess Pinellas has been doing this for quite a bit of time. Actually, Mr. Chapman, you're the one that told me that, right? I think Pinellas has been doing it for a while. So Pinellas and Charlotte, they sent us theirs. We also have our old evaluation form. And I think the first, I, I think this is going to be more of a discussion than just today, because I, I don't know if any one of us, and if we do, great, but I don't know if any, we have an actual draft, like, hey, this is what we want, all of this, and here it is perfect, and then we tweak it. I think we've got multiple things here to look at. I liked Pinellas. I liked their evaluation form. I think we would tweak things and do some, obviously with some goals of our district and the strategic plan and things like that.
Yeah.
Um, and so we can definitely talk about, if you had a chance to look, or just overall ideas. Um, I think what I would, what, if the board, if you guys are okay with this, I think that if we can just spend some time discussing what we believe it should look like, maybe pick and choose from what we see here. And then create something, whether it be, you know, Ms. Cox putting something together of what we're saying, or we all make our own and then come back together. And I don't know how it was done originally with, with, you've been on, I'm looking at, obviously you, Ms. Messenger, about how it kind of evolved with Ms. Saunders. So maybe shed some light on that. But my thinking is, we all kinda come back eventually and say, here's exactly what we want it to look like, and we vote on that. Go ahead, Ms. Forman.
Do you recall, I was the tweaker on the, uh, the most recent evaluation form?
Yeah, the one, yep.
Yeah, and, and initially, Ms. Cox sent out the 2021 evaluation form, which was the old one, which was the one I really disliked. Um, and wanted to see us, as you said, it's not performance, it's goals. Have, have, have you met that, met that mark? And that's what the 2122 attempted to do. And that, and probably went into way too much detail, because it's 11 pages.
Yeah.
But, um, but the gist of it was, is that we had goal number one, leadership and management, which was part of, you know, a, a major heading in our strategic plan. And then all of the different things that were related to that. And you would find them in our strategic plan. Um, so, um.
Uh, you, this, this is much more goal-oriented than I remember it being.
Well, the first one, the first one you saw was not goal-oriented.
The, the one that's 2122.
Right, that's the, that's the one, and it's got, you know, a measurement column and, um, yeah, and, and states, states, states what the measurements were.
The measurement is.
Yeah, like.
The goal, the measurement, and the, the scoring.
Right. But anyway, so, um, I'm not tied to this concept, but I
Do you like?
am tied to measurements.
Yeah, do you like, my question would be, since you kinda have the floor right now, do you like what we did last year and would keep all of it? Other than tweaking, obviously, the strategic plan may be different, because it's what it is now, but.
In practice, I liked it, I loved it when I did it. Um, but in practice, people, it's too much. They, they would go, yep, it's a 4.0. It's, you know, and, and, and no, no comments. I do wanna emphasize to, especially the new board members, a performance evaluation is a tool. And it's a tool to not only measure what the, what the superintendent has done, but also to provide comment. And I think it's a huge disservice to just give a score and go on, go on your merry way. You know, so, um, I, I just wanna get that, get that stated from the outset. The lack of comments on prior year, years was disturbing. And I do think I went into way too much detail on this, so.
Well.
On this one.
Okay. Did you have a box?
Yeah, I have a few. I, I, the old evaluation system, I'm not sure how it came about. Um, I think it was supplied to us and we, you know, we liked it better than the other options that had been given to us, much like this, we're doing today. I personally like the Pinellas County one the best out of the ones that are in front of us. I, I like it because it allows the superintendent to provide documentation, which Mrs. Saunders did do that with this one, um, which was to her benefit, obviously. So I like that piece of it. If we wanna tweak it, that's fine. I don't actually believe it needs a huge amount of tweaks, um, because a lot of it is, I think, would align with us. You know, ensuring the curriculum instruction assessment is designed and delivered with focus on continuous improvement, student engagement, academic achievement. Like, gosh, that falls into so many different things. I think the problem got to be with this, whether it was the new one or the old one, is it got to be too much, right? So I think we have to edit ourselves so that it doesn't become this again. Um, this, the, the nice thing about the Pinellas County one is the simplicity of it. It allows the board member to make comments, which, you're right, some board members don't make comments, that's their choice. Uh, I always made comments, because I think that that helped the superintendent understand where I stood, helped the community understand where I stood. And I think that that's, you know, uh, there were years where I did it in different ways, where I'd write, hey, these are the good things, and these are things that I think need to be improved upon in order to get this score. And then I didn't do that after the second portion, because I, I did that in, in a personal meeting and didn't necessarily say those things. Because that's really for the superintendent to know those things, not everybody else. Um, but you know what I mean, that we, how, how the person chooses to do it, that's, that's really a, that's a personal choice. Um, but I, I personally think that this one makes, uh, uh, sense. I think if anybody in the community wanted to see it, they could understand it easily. They could understand our position easily. I don't think it needs a huge amount of tweaking, nor do I think we should do a lot. I don't think we should add.
Who are you talking about?
Pinellas.
Pinellas.
I don't think we should add a huge amount, because the simplicity of it is its benefit. Um, I, I do wanna make it pointed enough that the superintendent would understand the goals, and I agree with Mrs. Forman, that the goals should be based on a strategic plan. Um, so, but that's easy. And I actually would make the argument that the majority of our strategic plan probably falls into the majority of the things that are listed here already. Um, there's some that I think, I don't quite agree with how they're worded, but once again, I don't think we need to do major changes. I, I personally like the Pinellas County one the best, with some tweaks, as necessary.
Right, okay.
I move we have Ms. Messenger do the tweaking.
Oh no.
Second.
I had it.
There's no votes in this one. Joke's on you.
Go ahead, Ms. Bray.
In looking in the 2122, on page two of 11, item number three, I remember this part, this discussion when the board was creating this. How much of the leadership was 25% of the score? And quality instruction was 25%? I, I don't know if that's, I didn't care for that so much.
I think that's the beauty of this.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm just stating from in the past, I just didn't like that. Okay, this, you get this many points for that, this many points for that. I think it's more feedback and then, you know, go through that. But I did read the Pinellas one, I'm like, oh wow, this is so much, it's more, it's simple. It's not so cumbersome, where I think ours was in, in many years, to be honest with you, in the past. But I do like the Su, the Pinellas County version. It gives us, okay, rate one through five, um, five to one, whatever it has on here now. But it gives us that big box of comments. I don't know if this is a Word document or whatever it is, but I, I like the simplicity. I love the simplicity of it, to be honest with you. And, and, yeah.
So, so the question I have too with like the scoring system we used to use, is like, you know, you'd like 4.2 and 4.3, like what's the, you know, there, what was the criteria of saying 4.7 instead of giving a four or a five? Was it, oh, that out of the 20, you know, 17 were hit, so if all 20 were hit, you would give a five? So those things, I think we need to decide, like, hey, it gets five, four, three, two, one? Good, like, hey, if we don't know, you're meeting it all the way, it's a three. If we know you are all the way, it's a five, you know? So those things, I think we need to make sure we know as a board as well. Um, Mr. Train, I'm just, kind of your thoughts on?
Yeah, two thousand one, as I, I agree with Ms. Messenger, I like the Pinellas form because of its simplicity. One thing that I will say, if, when we do this kind, the simpler it is, one key point is that during the, the evaluation period, it's essential that the person being evaluated gets some intermediary feedback. So what's not fair is, when I say it's not fair, but it's, in my leadership work, it's best practice to say, to maybe, we might even wanna make this policy, at least at the midterm, like six months into his evaluation, if not even quarterly, to sit down with him and say, and actually go through the evaluation form and say, this is how I perceive that you're doing in that, this area, this area. And give him an opportunity to get feedback and then, and then do better, so to speak. Instead of getting all the way to the end of the evaluation period and saying, well, I'm gonna, I'm only gonna give you a three in that area. And he might say, well gee, I wish I'd known that you weren't happy about that.
Right.
I would've tried to work on that. So if we don't wanna make a policy, at least we should take it and make it incumbent upon ourselves. If not, at least, if not quarterly, at least one time, preferably at the midway point, to sit down with him and actually go over this and go, this is how I perceive you doing, and here's an opportunity to do better. And then if Mr., uh, Dr. Weisong was extremely motivated, what he could do is, he could actually go through this, before that meeting, go through it himself and say, this is how I perceive myself doing in this area.
Right.
Uh, how do you? How do you perceive? And then you actually come up with a performance plan between the two people to say, okay, this is my perception of how I'm doing, you as my, you know, senior advi-, or, you know, boss, so to speak, this is how you perceive I'm doing, and let's come up with a plan we need to agree upon to help me do better through the rest of the evaluation period. So that's a thought, and you can take that for what it's worth, if we're going to pick this one. And then the second thought, and I have misgivings about this, because, well, I'll tell you my misgiving, but I'd like to, I say I'd like to, but I'm open to hear your ideas on this. I'd like to see maybe one or two specific goals to try and achieve, such as trying to get 90% of the buses running on time or something. The problem with that, although, is then it becomes teaching to the test to some degree. If you put a specific goal out there, and then, you know, Dr. Weisong's sitting around, and he's like, well, I like to be spending my time on A, B, C, and D, but there's this specific goal that the school board said they really wanted. Gee, well, you know, but I don't know. I'll ask Dr. Weisong, would you like to, not, not 10 specific goals, but like one or two specific kind of measurable priorities for us to get you to focus on that maybe are a problem that we'd really like to get your attention on? What are your thoughts on something like that?
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. I, I do think it would be helpful for the board as a whole to talk about what the priorities are, so that, not just for the purpose of my evaluation, but so that the leadership team hears what the board would want to see to say, we had a successful school year, right? So I, I, I think that's, you know, the first part. And then the second part, in terms of the number, and this is just based on, you know, seven weeks or so in this seat, is there is a lot that's happening that we're addressing that is never going to be in a goal statement, right? But they're just things that have to get taken care of. And, and sometimes they're leadership pieces, sometimes they're management pieces. Sometimes they're externalities that we don't have control over, couldn't have foreseen. And that's what, that's what causes us to take our focus off of whatever you all tell us, you know, are, are the priorities. And to me, the reason this kind of ties in with the master board training is one thing that I want to know, and I think our leadership team wants to know, is are we full speed ahead on Ready 2026? Because if we are, then, then, then our goals are spelled out. They've, they've already been approved by the board. But if there are things in that plan that the board is no longer excited about, or if there are elements that are more important than others, I think that's the signal that I'm looking for, regardless of the instrument you choose to use, so that I can work with the leadership team to say, this is what our community's elected officials need us to get done as the staff.
I agree, I agree with what you, what you just said. But you look at that strategic plan, I don't know how we go. I don't, I don't even know if we can talk about that in the, in the master board training, because that's something that we would eventually vote on, vote on, and that would be a sunshine law violation unless we get our tweak that we want for training, right? So, so the question is, how do I, and I don't know if you all agree with me, but I'd like, I'd like, I'd like to see the buses and a significant improvement, whatever it takes. Now, I, I understand there's fiscal constraints. Let's spend $100 million on bus transportation and hire a private driver for every student. I understand that's not reasonable. But on the other hand, I'd like to see a significant improvement in buses arriving on time and, you know, not having kids late in the evening. And how do we communicate that to Dr. Weisong? Is one particular goal this year that we'd really like you to make a significant progress on? How do, do we do that by tweaking the strategic plan? Or do we do it just by putting a line on the back, you know, one or two top priorities that say, please focus on this?
I, I do, I agree that, I think it would be, I'm, I'm a little split, because I think that, yes, I do agree that I would love some overall two or three, like bigger goals to say, hey, this is something that, that we would focus on. Obviously, everything else, and everything's going to work on that goal anyway. So it's not like it's a completely different goal, that your normal stuff's going to be able to build on those goals. My only concern about, if you, if, if you have a couple of those goals, what does it look like when they're not hit? And we're 0 for 3? And some of that may not even be, some of that may not even be in, in our control. When I say our control, the district superintendent's control, et cetera. I, even the buses, like I think the buses, yes, like, I, I, I think the overall issue is not enough staff. But then you go back to, to what if there's car wreck? You know, you can't control, if it's kindergarten or and parents not there to, and you got to wait there at the, at the bus stop till the parent gets there. If that's 10 minutes, 15 minutes, that's now pushed everything else back. And, but I, I agree with you, it is an issue, like busing is an issue. But I'm just saying, there, if we do those goals, I just don't want, I don't want those goals to then put, be, put leadership into like a no-win situation. Like, how do we? I don't know if that makes sense. I'm for them, but it just, it, it, it almost, if, if we strike, if we, all of a sudden it's 0 for 3 on these three main goals, I mean, you know, is the public going to say, how are you keeping this guy around? And I'm not saying just Dr. Weisong, I'm saying anybody. I, I just, I don't know, I don't know, it's.
I, I just want to comment like on what you're talking about, a specific number for a measurable goal, a result. On the 202122 evaluation, on page five, measurement has by 2023, 60% of our third grade students will meet or exceed grade level expectations for reading, as evidenced by progression through the reading continuum. So, I don't think that we did that, you know, by that school year. And then again, 2% each school year baseline, and it's got the goal, according to our strategic plan. It has the goal over here, and then the measurable over here. So, you know, did they, did it happen? I don't think it, I don't, I don't think that it happened at all. And on one of them, by May 2024, on this old one, 100% of staff and students will receive training and instruction on social, emotional learning, mental health, human trafficking, and substance abuse. That's, you know, that's hard, because, I mean, we have a program all staff has to go through every year. So that's almost a requirement, not a measurable, you know? So I see what you're saying. But yeah, there should be some kind of a benchmark that you need to reach. You know, not just a grade 1 through 5. What those are.
For the measurement part of it.
Right, for the measurement part of it. But for the actual, you know, meeting that goal and putting a number to it. You know, I, I get, I, I'm with you, I just don't know.
Which one it is.
Which one, or what one it should be.
Go ahead, Ms. Messenger.
I just want to say that I'm not opposed to doing that, but I don't want it to be so targeted that, as you said, attention gets diverted from what I think would be the most important things. To me, the most important things are safety and education. And if I were to set a goal, it would be a reading proficiency goal and a graduation rate goal. And those would probably be the only ones I'd want to set. And I say that because in order to have those things, you have to have transportation working properly, so kids get there to learn. You have to have your budget in line, so that the resources are going to those fields and to the classrooms effectively. You have to be able to attract and retain your employees in order to, once again, reach those goals, because you can't do that without the people there. And you have to be able to select appropriate curriculum that matches standards, because the standards are going to be reflected by those measurements. So if I were to pick a goal, the goal would be something broad, such as reading proficiency and whatever grade, I mean, everyone always picks their grade, I don't know why, we could do that. But a, a reading proficiency benchmark of, of growth by a certain percentage, maybe it's 2%. I mean, it's hard to move thousands of students up, and, and especially now that we have new standards, a different test that is, is, may or may not be valid, whatever. And so that, that will be hard to, to even show. And maybe busing is easier to show, right? It's really direct. It's like, you either hit that on time or you didn't, right? Whereas I feel like what's used to determine proficiency seems to change often. We don't know what, you know? But in the same respect, you can't do any of those other things if you're not focusing on the academics. So if I were to do a goal, I'd want it to be a broader goal, which is maybe graduation rate, right? That's, that, I would like ours to match the state's, at least, you know? But then that might encourage game playing, right? Because we've seen that happen. I mean, that's the thing. I think there's a downside, no matter what we do.
I think the goal has, I don't, and as Mr. Tatum, you said, like, I don't want to focus on something else really and, and miss something else. So I think the goal has to be overarching multiple, multiple things. So if you look at like, maybe it's, it's X amount of schools or zero Fs and X amount of schools at C or higher, right? So something that, that's going to play into, is the bus there on time? Are we doing extra rea-, you know, all those types of things.
Except for that system is different this year than it's going to be in the following year.
True, true.
So that, once again, like, it, it's just, and it'll change whenever they choose to change everything once again. But I, I think that that's valid too, like saying, we do not want any D or F schools, and, and then we move it up over time. We do not, we only want this percentage of A and B, I mean, like you could change that, I could see that.
I always had a problem with the school grades, because it is manipulated. And it's, and it's a moving target. If we want to, to measure student achievement, I don't even think that we can say we want 60% reading at grade level by third grade, because there are, we have, in that third grade component, we have students who may have only been in this country for a year and who are not speaking English. So, but studies have shown that once they do achieve proficiency in English, they're at that point bilingual and actually far exceed the, the people who speak English only. So I would almost ask that we categorize students and for both Eng-, for proficiency at third grade in both math and, and, well, it's not English, it's ELA. But break it down and say that this is an acceptable goal for our non-English language learners. This is an acceptable goal for our Title I students. I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just tossing that out, you know? You see what I'm getting at now?
Yeah, I see what you're getting at, it's hard, I mean, it's.
Yeah, because it's not a homogenous group.
The problem with overly broad goals is there, there's so many variables that go into understanding whether we, why it was or was not achieved, that it makes it difficult. Whereas it's pretty easy to run a report and say, how many, did the buses arrive on school at 90% on time or not? Or did 90% of the kids get to school on time, whether it's a bus, a private car, a van, whatever, you know? But when you have these big, like, I'm just, again, I'm, I'm going back to my other experience in the government. If, if you're looking at takeoff, you know, pilot training base, which is a flying education base, and it, you know, consistently, the mission on-time takeoff rates are at 70%, and that's not acceptable. You know, the, the guy next tire up in the chain of command's going to look at the maintenance and the operations group commanders and go, I want that to be 90%. You give me a plan to get it to 90%, that's your goal to meet. And, and then they achieve it or they don't. And if they don't achieve it, there's a discussion and there's a hot wash that says, why couldn't we achieve it? And then we, as leaders, get to decide, was, is that acceptable? Well, we had, we had 20 more weather days than we, than we expected. And so normally, we, we, you know, this extra rain and thunderstorms caused us to be late. Okay, that's an acceptable reason why, but, but if it wasn't, it was just, well, we didn't do it. And then we, we look at it and we go, why not? And they go, well, we, you know what I mean? That's for us to decide. But my point is, a specific goal is easier to measure than these big, give me more, like you said, Ms. Foreman, you know, how many, if we have 500 new kids that show up that don't speak English, that's going to really impact our rate. No matter how hard his staff tries, it might be difficult to get to 60%. Or school grades, they, they vary, but go ahead.
But, but measuring whether they got to school on time does not measure the quality of their education. Reminds me of back, my stint in the corporate world, where you, they reported, were you on time? And, and it was like, that is nuts. If I come in a half hour late, but I work 10 times harder than the next guy, I do, I have much more productivity, you know? That is what should be measured, not whether I was consistently coming in a half hour late, which I did. So, that's why, why it didn't last in the corporate world.
Um, but that's my, you're on business center, right? It's very like I'm working for myself. Well, I agree with, I, I, I think what's really hard is, is when there's so many other things that he, from a, from a superintendent standpoint, this is why the evaluations, to me, just kind, I mean, you can't control most of the things that we get measured by. You could be the best teacher and, and your kids are engaged every day, and that kid goes to take a test, and he woke up late, his parents were fighting, whatever, and he doesn't do good on the test, yet that marked you as a teacher, which is what we always say, is, oh, this reading, the reading's now, but what are we doing in the schools? Again, our reading, we're not teaching these kids to read. Do you think we're really not teaching these kids to read? So I just, I, and so, but that's, that's all of it. It's not just reading, it's math, science, whatever it is. There's so many, there's so many factors at play for a student to be successful. Some of me thinks that the broader stuff that, what, what can we control? What we can control are, are we making sure we're providing the best curriculum experience? Not whether that kid absorbed it and then went and took and demonstrated on a test. I just, that, that is, that's extremely hard. I mean, I just, um.
We can control.
Either way we slice it.
Generally, we can do better, we can control getting the kids on time to school.
I know you're, I know you're hard on that fact, and I agree with you, I think we, but there's also a whole lot of issues that will prevent a bus from getting there that we can't control. There just is, there just, there's a lot of it. The traffic out there, how many people are late normally to their jobs or an appointment or whatever? And then what will they say? Talk, that traffic was horrible, I left my house 20 minutes. Jen, I thought it would take me 10, it took me 20. I mean, I, so there's going to be a lot of things, a lot of factors that we can't control there either. I'm not, I agree with you, we should get the kids on call me, our goal should be 100, right?
Doesn't even have to be a bus, though, it could be, whatever the plan is to make that, to get kids on, it's not so much the buses arriving on time, it's kids getting to school on time and.
And again, that's out of our control too, because if mom or dad were, aren't there and they're working, or, or they fell asleep, and so, again, I don't want to say, oh, you, you get a 4 because half of our parents took their kids to school late. I just.
Well, it's not, I guess it.
And I know I'm being a little overdramatic about the half, but and I'm not saying we shouldn't have specific goals either. It's just, it's, it's tough to me, this evaluation, I mean, I think you, you know, I don't know. I think you know if, if a superintendent is doing their job or not, but.
I was just going to say, though, but I don't want to be unfair, as he said. Like, you really do want to make sure that it's really clear. For me, it's academics. I want to see that our students are proficient or are working towards proficiency. I don't want to segregate ELLs or Title I, because Title I's my heart. So I want them just as proficient. I know that's a harder hill to climb, but I'm willing to see resources put there. And if I say I want proficiency at a certain number, that might mean more resources go to the Title I, more resources, the resources go to ELL. I'm cool with that, because that's the whole point. Like, then you know that the budget is focused on that thing. That thing is the most important thing to me, and that is, are students performing as best as they possibly can? Getting the very best education again? Yeah, I agree with you, there's things that are totally out of their control. I could give you a whole list of things that I've encountered as a teacher, title, teaching in Title I. So I know that, I do understand that, but in the same respect, there, there should be something, some sort of, and I like the idea of the grades too, even though I do feel like that's also a game. I agree with you on all of those things, except for the fact that that is how we are graded, right? Like, I don't agree with the system, I think this is. Like, I don't agree with the system. I think the system is not a good system. I love the idea of deregulation. It's brilliant. I've said that for years to our legislators. It's gone nowhere. So I'm so excited that it's going somewhere now. But this is the system we have. This is the system that uh when a family chooses to move here, they're going to look at. This is a system when a business comes here, uh and we are an economic driver. This is something that they do look at. And so to be responsible to the community, I do think something that is representative of that system it probably has to be there as much as I don't necessarily love or agree with the system. I think that there has to be something that shows proficiency or graduation or grades or however we want to work it. To me, it should be an academic focus because all the other pieces get taken care of if that's the focus. Buses will get taken care of, uh it employees will get taken care of. Safety and security, that was another one that I thought about. Employee retention, those those all those things I think come together if it's an academic focus. That's just me. And I don't want it to be overly broad. I do think that there should be something specific. What that specific thing is.
I I think too, you know, to add in um measurables. I mean, his his directors ultimately helps with his success. So, you know, for me, I think that yeah, it's all about the education of our students. It really is. But to me, it's also about what we're doing to for our community, all right? Like with the referendum, we talked about that at length. Part of that referendum was the general fund doesn't have enough money. And it was explained that maybe we need to start getting more money into the general fund instead of using a referendum. So to me, it's even a monetary measure. Okay, how can we get our budget in line to where we're not having to depend on a referendum? The referendum can be used for other things instead of, you know, being on a ballot for teacher's pay. So that would be one of the things I would like to see is because that was never brought up after the referendum got in. That whole moving money and Ms. Foreman, I know had said something about moving money into the general and not having to rely on a referendum. And I didn't see anything move that needle at all in the last six years. So to me, that would be a measurable for me to have that in there somehow.
Some financials?
Yes, some financials.
Again, I think if your vote, if your focus is on education, the financials are going to make sure that the focus is on those educational pieces that the classrooms need in order to re- re.
Right, it all it all filters down to education.
That's my point. Like i- if you're looking for one or two singular goals, if you make it an education one, all the other pieces, I think, fill into that. You know what I mean? I I we could debate the moving of money thing because I've debated it with Mrs. Foreman lots of times. That's a whole different discussion. That's not the discussion for today.
I do want to I do want to ask us this, if I can, can so if we all kind of feel like because I think we could all sit here and talk forever, and I think we need a direction of, again, I would like to have us have drafts, to like each one of us have a draft ish, a draft ish. It we all know it's going to be ve- very similar to Pinellas. Or if you want to 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 I I I think that I think we're good, like we we're just, we're never going to come down to let's do this unless we have something right in front of us that we're all like, yes, let's do this, right? So so if we if we the 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 next time we can do this to come back and say, look, this is, here's yours, here's mine, based off of kind of what Pinellas County is doing, right? That structure. Then we just combine to say, hey, do we like all this? Do we like? Maybe it's one, you say, Ms. Foreman's is great. We're all going, we're all Ms. Foreman's.
I think.
Right? Or Ms. whatever.
I I made the motion that uh.
And so so I'm okay with that, too. I I'm if if you feel like, hey, I don't really want to do that, um I don't have a strong I don't I don't have an idea right now currently, if we would have to decide, of a strong like single one, one or two, like a one or two or three, like ultimate goals we want to hit on. I don't know if I have an idea right now, like to make that decision, you know what I mean?
Right.
Now, I make an influence by what Ms. Bray says or what Mr. Tatum says or what Ms. Foreman or Ms. Messenger. So that's why I think if we could all come back with a concise approach to say, and we're going to use this format of what Pinellas did, which looks like a total of, how many goals? Six or seven? Five?
I think there's five.
Impact rapport building is one, that's six. Integrity, seven. Work standards, eight. So it's like, I mean, I don't know if we want to do all those two, but something very similar to this that that we come back with and say, here's mine, here's yours, now what do we what do we look at, right? I mean, is that something, Dr. Weisong, I mean, I'm asking you, I mean, you're the one's going to be evaluated. But is that something that you feel like would be a a an appropriate way to move forward to to final finalize something for you to look at and your staff to look? I know you want as soon as possible, obviously.
Uh yeah, I I I think that that will work, Chairman. I think a- another way to kind of think of it is the way that and we really haven't made a lot of changes, the way this organization is structured, we really have three divisions. We have a finance division, an operations division, and an academic division. And so it may also be helpful to think in terms of 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 those three. And part of my work is at the at the helm of those divisions are our deputy superintendents. Do they have the tools, the resources they need to lead their folks well? So that our schools are supported, our departments are supported, our budget is sound. So I think it may also be helpful to think of it in terms of those three divisions, financial, operational, academic. I don't know, I I I think you all had the, you know, classic debate about, you know, goals and measurability and and focus and all of that. Uh that that's hard to solve. Um but really, the organization is structured around those three divisions and 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 their performance. Um and then a little bit of how they interact to support each other. That that's what I'm seeing so far here.
What do you mean, Dr. Weisong, that we should structure the evaluation in those three categories essentially? With maybe a fourth for overall leadership on your part or something? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I think I mean, if I think if you look at the Pinellas tool, because that seems to be where where you all focused. There 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 is a little bit of that there already. But I think in terms of of thinking about, you know, how our organization actually works, we're 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 really three divisions with um with student achievement as the goal. But how do each of those divisions work together to accomplish that? That may just help frame how you look at each of those goals.
I do think when you look at Pinellas and maybe this, I there there's like their very, the very first goal, obviously, is increase student achievement resulting in improvements in every school, right? Learning gains, higher proportional graduation rates. So that's all, everything that we just kind of talked about, graduation rates, schools, school grades, all that combined into one.
Yep.
Right? So like, what is the base of evidence? Well, he's going to show us that out of all elementary schools, we have no Fs, and we had two last year, we have no none this year. And so I I I I think that these goals were almost like what almost what Mr. Tatum said was like, these were more specific goals that are going to be, maybe not as specific, but I don't know. I I I um I still think if we all come together with an actual, hey, here's my draft and we tweak it. And the next, maybe during the next board briefing, if you want to bring it and see, you know, thoughts, what ideas, whatever. I mean, obviously, this is us evaluating the superintendent, so I don't know if the.
What do you think?
Superintendent, there's own, but I do want, I do want some ownership that, you know, that and I think you just provided some really good information right there in your thoughts. So, I mean, is that is that okay with everybody else? Okay, let's come up with ours and bring it back and come.
I think we need to do it in a workshop.
I think it needs to be another workshop to where we 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 come back with our own stuff and then.
And Ms. Cox can distribute.
Yeah, everybody's.
We turn it all into Ms. Cox.
Correct.
And she distributes it to everybody.
And if we need to do a special one, we can, because I know we got some that are already filled and we're, we got people leaving vaca-, you know, not vacation, but fads and all that kind of stuff. So we need to fill something in we can, but um I agree with you. I I just think that we could sit here for hours and hours and hours and discuss this. I'd rather have us each come with our own our own draft than we come with a concise one, then we vote on it at the board meeting. You're looking at me like you don't agree.
I don't agree, but that's okay.
Okay. What's your what's your thoughts?
I don't really feel like this needs a whole lot of tweaking to do all the things we've already just talked about. I think you're right.
The Pinellas one?
Yeah.
It just needs to be put someone staff, I don't know, somebody needs to put the Pinellas one.
Your job is easy.
Yeah.
I mean, like, if I'm going to come back, I'm really just going to add like the word transportation, like I I and I know where I'm going to add it. Like, that's literally probably the only thing I will do.
I would ask, I would ask also add, Mr. Dr. Weisong, do you think capital projects would be one of the measurable? I mean, we said uh operational, finance, and academics and capital.
But that's in here.
Is it in there?
Provide quality technology and business services to optimize operations, communications, and academic results, which is where I add the transportation into that one. And there's one that's fi- fiscal responsibility and using the resources, so I.
You can go for is develop a sustained, effective, efficient use of all resources.
That's what I'm saying.
So fiscal responsibility.
Honestly, we'll only add the word transportation. I'm just letting you know right now. I think the only I only thing I need to change is number five and add the word transportation in that list. That's just me. Now, you already know, I foretold you what I will change.
There you go.
That's my draft.
It's done.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to say, I'm not really going to change too much of the Pinellas County. I mean, I guess if we feel like we're ready to roll the Pinellas one, we can and we can tweak as we, you know, next year as we say, hey, this didn't work or this did work, I mean, I.
I agree with Ms. Messenger, right? I like her idea of, and that was a good discussion. I threw that bomb out onto the table about having specific goals. It was a good discussion.
But I think it's going to work with you to that's your evaluation.
Yeah, if you put transportation in there and I can.
I'm adding it. I think adding it on the list of number five, I think, is appropriate.
Yeah, I do too.
The only thing about delaying too, real quick, is that if he, Dr. Weisong deserves this soon.
Agreed, agreed.
And if we delay it in another workshop and then we go through it again, then we put it on a board, I mean, this is.
So let's do this. Can you, uh, Ms. Cox?
He knows we like this, so he can get started.
So you can look at the Pinellas County model.
Take Pinellas's model.
Yeah.
Create it into a new, you know, word document.
School district from Manatee County, that's all she has to do.
And then the 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 goal number five, we want add to add transportation.
Right.
Five, okay.
Yeah, I liked, I did like this.
Operations, communication, academic results. We want to add transportation. Um and then if you could just send that out to us.
Yep.
Uh our next board meeting is is uh September twelfth, the real one. And we can, if we feedback to you, once we get it, feedback to you if we're like, hey, no, two, three of us are like, nope, we don't scratch this, then we'll scratch it. But if everyone comes back like, hey, we like this, then we'll just throw it on the twelfth agenda and roll.
And Chairman, if if I can add, since since the board likes the Pinellas County model, Dr. Grego is among the many people who've had a very positive impact on my career. And so my thought is that I'll reach out to him to ask how he structured the goals portfolio. Because that appears to have been a critical part of the system that he and their board use, so.
Well, they might have a template that we can use and just work with it.
I I'm sure he'll have good advice.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So I'll I will reach out to him just to get that part of the equation.
Perfect.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Good dog.
Glad I went back to Ms. Messenger. Glad I saw her face. Disgusted at my idea. All right, moving on.
Oh, my goodness.
All right, last thing for today's agenda, school board operations discussion. Um this was um Mr. Tatum, Ms. Bray, Ms. Foreman, are there contacts on here? I don't know what that means, but Ms. Bray or Mr. Tatum or Ms. Foreman can start with whatever their ideas were for the workshop.
I um, one of my intents, um and even when I did one-on-one interviews with the superintendent candidates, my, one of my conversation pieces was the school board is the only elected officials in the county and perhaps even this county anyway, this district, that board members do not have a office. They have to reserve a room. And I have se- talked to community leaders and have scheduled meetings with them. And they came here thinking I had a office to meet with them. And they were shocked that the school board members do not have offices. And I'm going to bring up the public commenter, I'm not here to intimidate anyone. That's not the purpose. This is uh when you do the master board training, it's all about working together and working in unison and all of those things. Um but there has been the effort not to have board members be in this building and have a permanent office. That is one of the goals that I had set for myself to have an office here. I think, uh and again, it's not to intimidate, it's to be a full-functioned board member. I have binders at home, I have binders in my car. I bring binders and materials every time I come here. And I know I have left here working with Mr. Tatum, still sitting here at eight o'clock at night uh working because he too does not have an office. So that's why I brought this up. I think there's space on the fifth floor for uh offices. I'm not looking for the best and the brightest. I just have to, me, I have to have that visual outside. Look, um so I think it's doable. Why it's not been done before from history and talking with former board members and former superintendents, it was the idea, they didn't want the board members here, they just want the board members come and vote and leave. And that was word for word from somebody in our community I won't share. But I just think it's um something that needs to be done. I think board members that want an office need to have a office. I don't necessarily think we need to schedule an appointment and then reserve a room. And when we schedule an appointment or a meeting with someone, they know where to come.
Okay, uh, Mr. Tatum, you had something on?
I would just like, I would like to have an office at, you know, my office is behind that door.
Crazy.
And but I don't need a big office where I can put an I love me wall or something up, you know? Uh and I I think if we had to have a meeting, even if it wasn't big enough for more than one or two people, if I had to have a meeting, I can reserve a conference room, that that's fine. And that's usually available. But yeah, I do need an office because the paperwork is starting to pile up in my little cubby hole back there. And sometimes I just leave it here and it's not, it's a little bit unsightly. Uh I've I've pondered where it should be for a long time. Uh and I know Ms. Bray feels strongly about the 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 fifth floor. I'm I'm I've pondered that for a long time. I'm kind of neutral about that. I would just like an office somewhere in this building so I can come and do work and and organize my my materials. If it was on the fifth floor, that would be fine with me. If if it's somewhere else, that's fine, too. Some of the things that I've talked this over with Dr. Weisong, you know, we we need to try and come up with some type of long-term plan if we're going to do this. Because, you know, you can't be every every two years, board members might change. And three of them wanted on the fifth floor and two of them say they want, it's okay wherever you put me. But then the new guys come in and only one wants it on the fifth floor, but everybody else says they want it on the fourth. Then people are moving all the time, so we just need to kind of come up with some longer-term plan. So uh I I I'm just neutral on where it is, Ms. Bray. I've I've thought long and hard about that. And and but I do need, I do believe that we should have an office. It's more professional when the public comes in. And for me, at least, it's necessary for me to be efficient with my work, so.
So I get, do you want to, I mean, I, or do you want to have a specific thing about it or you just want to go on?
No, I'm.
I know your name was on it, so.
My name was on it because I strongly object to it. To be up on the fifth floor is um, it's not saying that our purpose is to intimidate, but the but the fact is, people could be intimidated. And we are policymakers, governance, we are not management. And so for us to be up there is disruptive and intrusive. And it can also, there have been times where it's been confusing for um for staff to get direction from one board member. You don't have the right to to ask anything of the board member. All of that should go through Dr. Weisong, so there's no reason for us to be up there other than meeting with Dr. Weisong or meeting with staff by appointment to interrupt their day just to pop in, you know?
That's not my intent.
Oh, I, let me. Oh, I, let me, let me finish, please. Um, but, um, there is, uh, there's no reason for us to be up there, um, without being invited. Um, if we want to have a meeting with someone, there are security issues taking them up there. I, I think that we can find something on the first floor. I mean, I, I could be neutral on the first floor, but I will not be neutral on the fifth floor. I just, that's not how we should be operating, and, um, it's not our function. You know, I just, there, there's, it, it's just a horrible idea, uh, in my, in my opinion. And to be on the first floor, they don't have to go through any more security than, than the front lobby. And, um, we have a little conference room. I mean, yeah, it's pitiful, and yeah, you've got the, uh, the cubby behind the door, you know? I think there was, um, big, uh, file cabinets in there that we could use to, to put stuff in, you know, and plus we have the, uh, the little, things in our hutch, but, um, I'll work anywhere, but we're not that important, okay? I just, our, our focus needs to be on the kids, and, you know, to draw either ti- staff time or resources away from our mission is, um, uh, is wrong. And, um, there are times I come in here and I work, and usually it's between, between stuff. But the reason I added my name to it when I learned that Ms. Cox, who here, is here many, many hours, all day, every day, uh, loses an office window because a board member wants it, um, that's just wrong. That's wrong. Our priorities are messed up.
I didn't, okay. I'm gonna interrupt.
Well, I'll, we'll let you, we'll let you. But Ms. Messenger, what do you, I mean, any thoughts, idea, I mean, about this?
Um, yeah, well, obviously, you know, there was a comment made about having a, what was it? I wrote it down, um, a long-term plan, so that this doesn't happen again, we do have a long-term plan, we have it. I've never had this discussion before in the seven years I've sat here, and you guys make my tenth board members that I've worked with. So in ten board members, I have genuinely never had this discussion. So I like that it's a new discussion, yay! But, um, in the same respect, what you're asking for exists. Because in the ten board members that I've worked with, no one's ever brought this up. My view of this job is to be in the community, to visit the schools, to build a rapport with the principals, um, so that they, when they see something on the agenda, they can call me up, and they do, or they can text me, which I don't like. But they can contact me, right, and say, hey, I see this item. What are y'all thinking? Or, hey, I watched you tonight. What were you thinking? You know, whatever that is. That, to me, is my job. I build a rapport with community members and, and a rapport with the, the schools as much as I possibly can in the time that I have. Uh, is there times that I come here and sit? Sure. Is this the best place? No. And I totally understand the desire to have an office. Um, I don't understand what, where it would be, it doesn't really, that doesn't matter to me one bit. And I do think the security issues are a valid one, and one that I have thought of too, like, they don't need to go up an elevator. Um, when I have met with community members, I have brought them in here in our little conference room. I've also rented out the conference room up on the fifth floor. That was our conference room. I've done both. And when I bring them here and they see, this is your office? I go, yeah, this is my office.
We're public servants.
We are public servants. I don't need anything fancy. This is my office. Here's my little cubby. Because my job isn't to sit here all day. My job is to go to the Pericivic Association meeting if I can go. My job is to go to the Fair Board meeting and listen to people. My job is to go to the schools in my district and say, hey, what else do you, what's going on? How can I help you? My job is to go to a PTO meeting and talk to parents. My job is not to sit here. And this job does require a considerable amount of reading, and a quiet place to do that is of value. I am completely in favor of, and I've said this multiple times, in favor of redoing that space that we have, 'cause it's a big space, so that it makes sense. 'Cause it makes zero sense. There is zero percent of that makes sense, none of it. It does not make sense. And I think that my cubby is in a totally different location than a cubby that would be behind the door. I would probably feel even more different. I, and so I totally understand that. But we are already planning to redo this building. It would not take, I don't believe, much effort for us to look at the plans and say, okay, how do we make this space better? Because there's a way to do that without uprooting a lot of people, without, um, causing, um, unnecessary, um, concern or fear. Um, you know, I know that maybe your intention isn't to intimidate people, but I have worked with board members that went from floor to floor in this building, from office to office in this building, directing people to do things. And so you have to keep in mind that maybe that's not your intention. I'm not saying it is, but there are people in this building that have lived that for years. They lived that. And, um, there's, there's gotta be a sensitivity to that. Well, the fact that we can rent out a, a boardroom on the fifth floor if we really want to, that's great. I don't typically do that. If I wanna meet with somebody, they can come sit in there. They can see my not fancy digs. That's cool. I don't mind that. I just don't think having a lot of offices in this building is a good use of space or taxpayer dollars. I think if we made this space make sense, that'd be great. I mean, I can think, I have lots of ideas of things that would make sense in this room, and that room, and rooms, I mean, I don't think we necessarily need more than that, and I think that that could really be to the detriment of the, of the, of the organization, honestly, if we do more than that. And, um, but I, I.
Can I, can I just come up with a solution? So can I, can I, um, I mean, so, um, I, I honestly think that what we have right now is a complete joke. There's no, I mean, no question. It's beyond, it's beyond ridiculous. But, um, me personally, I will not be here in an office. There, there will be one open office. If we built five different offices, there'd be one open for me. That doesn't mean down the road, I'm not gonna be here. Someone else may use it, absolutely. But I would not use this office to do the work of the, of the district. But I do understand that there are people that are willing, that do want that office to do it. I, I, I think a solution is this. Number one, we do have long-term plans to do this building, and I asked Mr. Rinaldi, it's, it's sometime within the next six, eight months, we'll see some kind of rendering and moving forward to do that. And I do think that as a chance, and I agree with Mr. Tatum, that we do something and, and do something, right? So I, I do a hundred percent agree with that. I don't necessarily agree that we should ha- we have to be on the fifth floor. I don't care about that. But I do think we should be given a chance. If we want an office, there, I think that there's office space here for folks to have. What I would say is, my opinion is, give the direction to Dr. Weisong to say, if you want an office board member, we'll find an office somewhere on the first, first to fifth floor somewhere. But my direction would say, we're not removing any staff that's already in an office. We're not, you're not saying, Derek, you're out, I'm in. You know what I mean? I'm not, or Mr. Jensen, excuse me. You know, I'm not, I definitely wouldn't do that to Paul, to Mr. D'Amico, 'cause he probably would be, but, um, but, but I, I wanna make sure that we're not, we're not removing staff members from where they already are, because they are the ones doing the day-to-day operations. But if two out of the, the five board members, or four out of the five, whatever, say, hey, I'd like an office, I would just say, let's find them an office. Maybe one's on the third, one's on the second, one's on the fourth, whatever. That, that, to me, would be sufficient. So, again, I think it's a compromise. Um, I do see both sides. Um, so I'm willing to compromise some way, somehow.
I'm fine if they wanna find an office, but I would limit it to the first floor, and it's for security reasons. Truly, like, if you're gonna bring community members, which is, if you're having an office, you're gonna be meeting with community members, 'cause we're supposed to be meeting, we are, we are working with the community. That's part of our job.
I just don't know if we can have it on the first floor. That's why I don't wanna just hamstring them to one floor.
I'm not really willing to subjugate security for convenience.
People have to sign in every time.
Well, it's, it's convenience of staff, is what I'm, I mean, I don't wanna have to move someone from the first floor up somewhere else.
No one's getting moved. So I'm saying that if no one's getting moved, and there's an open spot on the first floor, that's fine.
No open spots on the first floor.
I have no idea. I, no, I haven't looked at a plan recently. What I'm saying is, for security reasons, I really don't believe it should be anywhere except for the first floor, because it makes the most sense for, for the security of the building, and for all the rest of the employees in this building, since there are, will be, obviously, community members coming in. That's my only point to that.
A community member that would be coming, that I would invite to come in here would be as, I would not invite somebody that would be a security risk.
See, I don't know if you, you can always know, because there's always community members that wanna meet with me, and honestly, I, I typically feel like meeting here is a safe place to meet. So when I meet with community members, I either pick like a public location, like a Starbucks or whatever, or I pick up here, because I know there will be other people here for security. So having the guardian right there at the front door, when I'm meeting here on the first floor, is a, is a safety piece. I, I know you might be thinking, well, I'm just gonna invite somebody I already know, but that doesn't, I mean, I meet lots of people that I don't know. I mean, that's part of the job. So then you're not gonna know whether there's a security risk or not, and having a guardian right there be on the first floor, so they don't have access to the other floors, because once they get past the first floor, I mean, like, that, it opens up to a lot of other people.
I guess you're, you, we're going off on way, way, way far out than what the intent was. When I have a meeting with a prominent attorney, a prominent attorney, and they come here expecting to meet with me in my office, and I have to meet them at the door and say, no, I'm going to your office, because I don't have an office that I, I'm willing to take you into that cubby.
No, but, but you could, but you could go to like room two fifteen, or, or a nice conference room, you don't, I mean.
I'm not gonna waver on my, my request. This was, uh, a question I had with, uh, Dr. Weisong during the interview process, and he didn't have a problem with it. I think the board has more of a problem with it than the, maybe the staff. I haven't gotten feedback from staff. I don't want you on the fifth floor, Ms. Spray.
They're never gonna say that to you.
Well, right, right. But I have felt nothing but welcomed, you know? And I sat outside waiting on my briefing. People have come to talk to me while I'm sitting there. I'm, it's not an intimidation thing for me. It's, it, it's more of, that's what I think.
You want the status of the fifth floor, and I'm sorry.
I think that, I think, listen, I don't wanna get, I don't, I don't think this needs to get anything crazy. I, I think that, that we're, there's, there's, there's a compromise here that I think works.
I asked for the little baby conference room that's got that little window. I was fine with that.
If we ask.
It's not occupied.
Stay on the first floor. I'm serious.
But you're, but again, you're only one board member too, just like she's only one asking to go to fifth floor, so. And this isn't, we're not voting on something here. I think if we would all just give, I, I think the solution, at least I do, I mean, to other people don't, is that allow Dr. Weisong to figure out some staff, some places. If we wanna stay on the first floor, whatever, as long as, as long as we're allowing, that, that's not an office. Like, tho- that's, that's a, those are, those, that's ridiculous. Those, that's, no. So, but I, and I know the meeting room, I've met with people in the meeting room, don't get me wrong, but, but that's not somewhere where you could sit by yourself and, and do. I do think that it is, it is not over our ass to find some offices somewhere.
Here's my only question to that. Serious question. What if that office is open because there's a job that they're trying to fill?
No, oh, I've already, well, I, okay.
And what kind of movement is that gonna create for employees when they put a board member in there? How, how flex, how flexible will this office space need to be? Every three months, should we just be prepared to move our office? Because now that position that, uh, we need that room in, in this building now? Because that, that's, I, I feel like that's what's gonna happen, right? Like, you're gonna say, well, room three oh one, that was, that was open before, but now we've hired Suzie to do whatever, and now we don't, we need that office in room three oh one, because that's in this area, and we need that area, so now we need to, that now, hey, guess what? Now you have to go move your office to now two oh seven, because two oh seven is now open. Oh, wait, three months from now, I'm going to hire somebody, and that person's gonna go into two oh seven, 'cause that's my only office in my designated area in this building, so in two oh seven, now you gotta move. Okay, in three months from now, you're gonna, like, do you, do you know what I'm saying? Like, I, I think, honestly, our space makes zero sense. But I think we can make it make sense in the plans.
Well, I think we can eventually, but it doesn't solve.
If we wanna talk about intimidation.
But it doesn't solve now.
There was so much intimidation with the, uh, in my opinion, with the former superintendent coming to me and having people at the front desk alert them if I walked in the building.
Well, this is.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if you wanna talk about intimidation, others on this board won't talk about that.
But that, no, I'm, I'm okay. That's, that's water on the bread. That's, that's passed now. I think we can get past, we can work to find a space. So I guess there's no really vote here, so, because it's a voting item.
Maybe something like, if you wanna, if you want an office, and it doesn't displace anybody, like Ms. Messenger said, for the short term.
Talk to Ms. Cox, Mr. Weisong.
And then in the longer-term plan for the rest of the building, we can start exploring more permanent options.
Absolutely. I think we're definitely gonna do that, right? Um, but it's just not gonna happen now. So I would say, if you want a space, but our request is, obviously, not to remove someone, not to get, move someone out of their office. Don't really care what floor it's on to be, I mean, first, second, third, whatever.
I care.
Well, I, I had people up in the.
But if you want an office on the first floor, feel free to have that one over there.
I don't. Not an office.
Well, it's not your decision to make the.
No, you know, it's.
Where mine's at.
So.
Fifth floor is a sta- I'm perceiving that it's status for you.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter what it is. The bottom line is that neither one, not any one of us sing- single-handedly can make a decision up here. So we gotta make it together. So, so there really is, I just want a direction, and if we, if we gotta put it to a board vote on a meeting, if that's what it's really gonna take, 'cause we can't sit here and make a compromise,
It doesn't need to be a board, but.
Then, I mean, I guess we will.
It just looks so petty.
But I, I agree. I think if we just allow, we, we've hired someone to manage this operation. Let's let him manage where we can stay if we wanna, if we want a office, as long as.
But we're putting him in a difficult position.
Yes.
If, if we're, if he's.
Don't necessarily disagree.
Put him in a difficult position when I, when it was discussed prior to him coming to the.
But can I say this, though? I know you said it a couple times. What you discussed one-on-one is not what the board discussed with him. So that's where, I don't particularly use that. To me, that's not a decision that I would make, is that you asked him, or can, do you care if the board's on the fifth floor? I don't particularly care that you asked him that, and he told you that. If it's a four-one vote, or a three-two vote, we are a board collectively, you're gonna make the decision on, on stuff. They may come with an idea about this place, and we're, us five are like, psh, nope, we wanna do this, and we can do it, 'cause we're a board together. But if I said to those plans, X those plans, and you all said, no, we're going with it, we're gonna go with what the board says. So, so, but again, there is compromise here. This is not, I don't think this has to be an issue of what we're, what we're causing this to be. There's empties off, there's empty offices. Find an office.
Yep.
Ms., Dr. Weisong?
I, I was just gonna say, that, that is what I'm looking for, is the direction of the board.
I don't know if you have it.
I, 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 I don't know that I do. I, I, I can personally and professionally make anything work. The, the reality is, you all needed to have the discussion, because to move the entire board to any floor would require displacing staff.
For sure.
And it, and, 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 and so, and, and, and again, it, uh, whatever we're gonna do, I would prefer to do it once so that we can move on and, and, and focus on key priorities.
Can you, can you, can you do this for, for me? Could you potentially, during, when is our next board briefing? It's next week?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you potentially have an idea, a next board briefing, on, on, here's some spaces, and just run it by us and get our consensus? and just run it by us and get our consensus? Because obviously you're gonna have two that say no to whatever, but.
I'm not saying no to whatever.
What?
That's inaccurate.
Okay, it is inaccurate.
I was fine on the first floor.
So the first floor, yes, you're right, you're right, you're right. You're right, you're right, you're right.
Don't put words in my mouth.
I'm not, I'm not. But it, but can you, can you come up with something? Cause otherwise we're gonna sit here and just go back and forth. We need someone to have a direction.
Why don't we go to a public servant, to a PSC?
To do it.
Why not have it in a different building? There's a room over at PSC.
I mean, I don't particularly care, like I said, I'm not using.
It's nice over there, you know, shoot, they have a bathroom with, with a, a restroom with a, with a shower. A marble shower, I mean, it's really nice.
Are you moving in?
Huh?
Are you moving in?
What are we charging for rent? Cause my son.
But, uh, but there's, but there's, there's lots of.
Maybe that's an idea, maybe that's an idea. I just, we're not gonna solve this right now. So I'd like to be able to, when we've had a discussion, you kind of see where we're at. Listen.
Does he really see where we're at?
Well, he sees where individuals are.
Well, I know, but I don't, I'm really afraid, no, genuinely, I'm really afraid that we're putting him in a really unfair, bad spot. I'm really, I'm really, that's a real concern I have right now. I don't like this.
Then, then I.
This isn't fair to him.
Then I will tell you that it stays status quo until we put it on agenda, we're gonna have to vote on it. I mean, how we, how else are we gonna solve it? I'm just, I'm asking.
Like I said, just, for right, for the short term, it looks like two of us would like an office and three of you don't, three of us don't. So could we get in a short-term office that's not gonna displace anybody and cause disruption? And then in the longer term.
And I've made suggestions, that's the thing that, that some of the board members don't understand. I have asked and made suggestions since I've been on this board and totally shut out.
But you're not being shut out now.
So now it's different and, and this, right. And from July 1, that was an email that I had sent out to staff and, well, to Dr. Weisong and staff saying, thank you, welcome to a new era. And, I mean, we all want to be connected and work in unison when we're in master board training and, and we're all voting and, oh, we got a consensus on the agenda. Everybody wants to be all happy and butterflies. But if I want an office, then it's like, no, you can't be near the staff. And I'm like, okay, let's figure out a way to make it work. Uh, I even suggested, okay, well, with Ms., the former superintendent, well, we can't have you up there with my cabinet. I'm like, okay, well, build a wall. If there's a, if you need that separation, feel like you need that separation with your staff, put me in a corner. A corner out of the way is fine with me. It wasn't like I wanted to be right in the middle of all of the activity that's gone up there. And I've sat up there at my briefing and I've seen staff walk from office to office to office to office. It's not like, it's not my intent.
So is, there is an office in the middle that's, that nobody is occupying in the middle of our, of our area, even on the fifth floor?
On the fifth floor, yeah. Fifth floor, yeah.
But you, so, but again, I'm not, I am a hundred percent against displacing someone for one of us to have an office. And I know you are, you are too.
Whatever works for Dr. Weisong, I mean, he says, yeah, that fifth floor actually works well, because we don't have to displace anybody. But if you want it on the second floor, then we're gonna have to move some, but let him figure out.
If you want a window, you gotta be on the second. If you don't want a window, you're fourth and fifth, whatever. I don't, I just think we're, we're just.
Unfortunately for Ms., Ms. Bray is that, uh, Ms., Ms. Messenger is definitely against being on the fifth floor. Ms. Foreman is definitely against being on the fifth floor, requiring it to be on the fifth floor. Mr. Cho and I are pretty neutral, so unfortunately, your insistence on being on the fifth floor is just one.
Window.
You're one out, you're one out of five.
Put me on a second, put me on a cafeteria.
But you do have a consent, but you do have a consensus. But I think we might be able to come to.
I can't handle, yes, it, it's, it's a personal thing.
So we might be able to come or compromise that we were talking about, which is, for now, those, you and I would like an office. And so we can work individually with Dr. Weisong in the short term to get an office. And then we can come up with a longer-term plan that we will vote on, whether we want five offices or three offices, or how we would do that space. And that's kind of what, what's feasible right now. It's, it's, it's what we could get, right? It's like getting eighty percent of what you want. I know you like an office on the fifth floor, but if we, if we walk out of here without this consensus, we may not get in, any of it. You and I can get an office right here, right now, by giving direction to Dr. Weisong that says, please help us find an office wherever it's convenient and makes sense in this building. We can get it, or we can walk out of here without that. I'd like to walk out of here with direction.
I mean, we're kind of going back and forth now.
We're not going back and forth? Can I say something?
Yes.
Okay, two things. Number one, our master board training is about a leadership team, right? And the leadership team is this board and the superintendent, no one else in this building. No one else in this building has to do with the master board training. That, the team is this, and that's it. There is, I know you, you, you brought up, oh, you want to get along, but, like, that's not the job. And that's not even what master board is about. Master board is about us and the superintendent being the leadership team.
I'm not gonna sit here and just continue to, to be scolded.
I'm not being scolded, I'm explaining what it is.
On what my role is here, okay?
I'm not, I'm not looking to argue with you.
I'm, I'm done.
I was actually gonna relent, hold on. I just wanted to explain that that's what this is about, okay? That is not about everyone else in this building. It is only about us and the superintendent. What I was going to say and relent is to say that if you can find a spot in this building that is not in use, will not displace somebody, and does not have a future use in the next year, then I'm fine with that. But I am not comfortable with moving people around or anything else like that.
Hey, Dr. Weisong.
Does that, does that give enough lead, like, so that we don't have to, I don't want to bring this up for a board vote. It's gonna be a hot mess express if we do it.
Does that give you direction?
It actually does, because now, in terms of being together in one space or apart in different spaces, and again, not displacing people, looking for vacant spaces, so Mr. Rinaldi and I will.
I wasn't looking for five offices in a row for board members one through five. That was never my vision, never my vision.
That's okay. I know, I didn't, I didn't think it was, right now.
With the exception that Mrs. Cox gets moved back to her office, and that is not considered a vacant office.
Amen.
No, I agree with that. That, that's, no, I agree. You got your direction?
Yes, sir.
All right, we are in recess. Thank you all.